Here.
Chancet, Salvati, Wolf.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
Meitzler.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Ewer.
Here.
Seron.
Here.
And McFadden.
We have the necessary forum to conduct business and we'll move on then to number two, which is a reminder to please speak into the microphone for BATV. Next up would be items to be removed, added, or changed. Do we have anything? Okay, we'll go right on then to matters from the public.
They'll be here next week.
Yeah, yeah. We'll give them this week off so that they can come back next week for four hours. Okay. First up on our agenda then for tonight's business will be Resolution 19-92-R, adopting the City of Batavia logo design. Griffin, you're up.
Have you started seeing me yet?
Tell you in about 20 minutes. Ah, yeah.
The updates that we sent out from BKNL, and we had some additional ones. I talked with Scott over the weekend on different type fonts. So we have some additionals in the back as well.
Thank you.
Just stand over there.
Kill them all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Don't have much of an introduction for this one. I'm just here to hear what y'all have to say in any way I can help or assist. You just let me know. Mark.
No. So y'all are gonna hate me. So I guess the challenge is when you continue to marinate on it, to steal from Salvati, you keep on thinking about it. And I think we kinda saw a little bit of that last week. And this kinda reminds me a little bit of when we were talking about the sheds in the backyard. And I kept on pushing and pushing and pushing because we didn't have a... Didn't feel like we had a consensus. And last week it seemed like the consensus kinda even split a little bit more and fractured a little bit more. So as the more we talked about this, the less we were together on this. And I think that's to be expected with decisions like this. And this is a big decision. It's like naming your child. You don't wanna have that name and 15 years later realize, oh, shoot, you know, that really, you know, it's too popular, or it's too unique, or whatever. And I think it comes... I know Drew said this last week, that it's safe. And I agree. I don't dislike it, so I don't want... I'm trying not to create a discord here, but I'm also not like, wow, it's awesome. So I don't know, I'm thinking different things. And I know it wouldn't necessarily be popular, but I'm thinking that... Or maybe it would be popular. Because I think, I know when the stuff from Spark went out to the community, wow, that was... We got a lot of backlash when that was released. And we got a lot of, why aren't you asking somebody at Batavia to do this? And that, you know, I started thinking about that recently. Why aren't we asking somebody at Batavia? Why aren't we asking the community? And doing something very short term.
That was a Batavia company that did that.
Okay.
That we have.
But what we're gonna be putting on that design there, which that's not set yet, we have the framework for it. But what we're putting on that is... Has not been decided yet. And whatever we put on that, we're talking, this is, we... Dave Brown needs to talk about it. You know, we're making decisions for the next 40, 50 years. And we're actually... Gary talks about that a lot. The decisions we make are long-lasting decisions. Whatever we put on that is gonna be on that for a long time. We're spending enough money that these are gonna last a long time. And I'm not sure that I'm comfortable with it, but I would love to have the buy-in from our community that says, that logo came from the community. And that logo is something that was designed by a member of the community. And that might resonate in the long run with the community. So I'm just throwing out there as an idea. I'd love to have a discussion about it. I'm not ready to vote on it tonight, I think is kinda the biggest thing on my mind, so.
How do other people feel? I mean, I think that's an important... If a lot of people feel like they're not ready to vote on it, then maybe we don't need to have a lot of discussion about it and we can just move on to the next agenda item. Because otherwise, when we come back and we do wanna vote on it, we're gonna have to remember what was said tonight, as opposed to doing that.
I would say I'm not ready. I mean, I don't... I'm not swayed, I'm not wowed, so I'm not ready, you know.
Okay. And then that being said, how long do you want to wait to bring this back for discussion? Joe?
Well, ask everybody.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, I love your opinion.
Mic has spoken. We're done.
Let's go home.
One of the things I noticed last week in our discussion about River Street, Alderman Brown was here and talked to some of us about what the intention and the vision of River Street was when it was decided to do River Street. O'Brien came... Alderman O'Brien came in last night and reiterated that, because he wasn't part of the conversation last week, and confirmed what I saw was that somebody had a vision for River Street, had a direction they wanted River Street to go, and we're carrying that on. I've gone back and looked in prior minutes, and I cannot find where Griffin was given any vision, direction, or suggestions on what was wanted. It was, here's a logo, and it's... I think the wow factor would come in when we'd like to see this, and this, and this, and this, and this. Don't want it bogged down in details. We don't need every little eyebrow drawn on a person's face. But here are some things we'd like to see incorporated into it. And I think that's kind of bad on us that you didn't get direction.
Sure, I understand that. From my perspective was, the research that we did was really good. And so I looked at all the interviews and all the stuff that was given to us, and I used that when it was created. So I felt like that was a lot of buy-in there. But once again, kinda what I brought up, I think the last meeting, is if you guys aren't ready, and specifically if you don't like this and you don't feel like this wows you, then I suggest we just get another company and we do it again. And then it's completely, you know, new and however you wanna do it. This was an attempt to take what we had, to give you something that I felt represented at Batavia well. I've gotten positive comments from multiple leaders in the community. And they're like, how come this isn't adopted yet? And I'm like, this has to be talked about and we have to all agree upon it. I'm like, it's not something that we just, you know, get through with and be done with. This was an effort to save time and also give you a good product that I felt that everybody could agree on, even if some people didn't love it. I found that nobody has truly hated it. And like I said when we talked about it, the only things that you can really dislike about it are the windmill, and the color, and the text. And the only comments I've seen online or in person are the windmill, and the color, and the text. So this is kind of the best, I think, that I can present based off of what we have. And if you guys just feel like moving forward and doing another company or another try, that's totally great. I personally just think that the city needs to better represent itself with a logo. And it doesn't have to be the one that I'm presenting to you tonight. So it's kinda up for you guys.
Well, you know, it wasn't indictment on you at all.
Oh, and I don't take it that way.
You did a good job. And then I wouldn't be opposed, I mean, not to burden you with any more, but to go back and just kinda deal with it a little tighter perhaps, you know.
Perhaps a suggestion would be is, if that's the direction to go back and work with another company, maybe a few Aldermen would like to volunteer to work with that company and have the origin of whatever comes from that. Just be a creative process between a committee of you and the fat firm.
I was also gonna say, and Joe made a very good point for you. I mean, that we didn't give you enough, perhaps, direction. And I thought that was an excellent point you made, Joe.
Nick?
I'll, just to be devil's advocate, nothing personal, Joe.
Go for it.
We went through iterations with Spark and brought the whole community in. So there might not be minutes of us saying specifically what we want, because we kinda turned it over and said, here's the creative, let them kinda guide how this process was gonna go. What they came back with, I didn't have a problem with, but it didn't make muster. But he did have something to go on, some direction through, and community feedback. So he wasn't on an island and just came up with something willy-nilly.
Spark had 850 responses to a survey that they sent out. And then they met with a couple of dozen of members of the community and with Aldermen to interview them, to get insight into what their vision was about the identity of the community.
And another point to that, to kinda back up, why I presented this right away was that they had done all that research and done well with it, but you guys didn't like the art direction ultimately. So this was to do another take on the direction with the same research. Normally, in this process, if I were to start it anywhere, you would start with that research before you got to anything. So because it was done, that was, that was why.
And I would just add, I mean, it gets to a point, especially with these fonts, it's like smelling perfumes. Like after the third one, I don't even know the difference anymore, you know. So I would have no problem. I think that's a great next step. I mean, I'm ready to move forward with this, but take a consensus if we're not, to get a few. And I would probably defer and have either Scott and Drew on that. It's unfortunate they're not here tonight. I wouldn't... I don't know. I still am cynical in that 14 people, we're not gonna get consensus on anything. And I do believe that this, this isn't our brand and the time and effort. I like safe because we can apply this to anything and build our brand around it, and it's not gonna defer from it or anything. So I like it, but it's a committee of 14, so.
Tony? Yep. I wasn't here last week, but I did watch a video. I apologize for that. I had a work obligation for that. But when I... When this part of the meeting came up, I kinda cringed and thought, no wonder we have not been able to get this resolved. It's... We're our own worst enemy. Joe, I hear what you're saying, but as I recall, the night that we hired Griffin and he gave a presentation, he talked about this specifically, that he was going to be doing this. And so that was the direction, you know, if we didn't say something, hey, don't do that, we don't want you to do that. He took that. I see, what I see, I love this logo. I think it is simple. I think it can be applied. It's versatile. We can move forward with this. We had consensus practically. The only reason Scott said no was, he wanted to marinate. Well, if we're gonna keep marinating on stuff, we are never gonna get anything done. I thought we had a pretty strong consensus. I thought that we hired someone, a very highly competent, who comes in with accolades. I think it was a score for the city. One of our own has come in. I would say a rock star in the business. And I'm not just saying that because I know Griffin. I do know you from the past, but you have impressed me with what you've done and you've brought forward stuff. You did, you tried to help us out with a problem that we've been having, is to try to be able to move forward with this. And now, when I watched that meeting, I was like, holy smokes! We're gonna shoot ourselves in the foot again. We found something that everyone liked, but it's given time. There was a few people that were able to derail that. And if we're gonna let the tail wag the dog, we are not gonna get anything done and be able to move forward onto bigger projects such as River Street and continuing to do those kinda stuff. If we're gonna be bickering about a logo, when we got a logo here that everyone liked, that is versatile, that doesn't tie us down, it's not, you know, if you look at our old logo on the front of the podium there, that's not as versatile as this one is, can be applied to many different things and used many different ways. And for that, I like it, and I'm ready to move forward with it. But, you know, I understand this is a committee effort, so, you know, whatever, what the consensus is, I would be ready to vote for it tonight, but that's how I'm feeling.
Marty?
Right. And like you said, you weren't here at the meeting. So for me, I know you can't say that I was 100% behind this. I was doing exactly what we shouldn't be doing, which is, we were so bitter from the Spark scenario, that that left such a bad taste in our mouth, that we are now the parents waiting with kids in a candy line, where we just said, move it forward. Because nobody came out and was like, I absolutely love it, it's great. It was, it is a solid job. We like it. It was not anything about being against it. We do spend week in, week out discussing things. The reason for that is because we come to a better product when we hash things out and bicker over them. And this should be bickered about, because this is a visual representation of our community. We should have something that we are all passionate about, that we are selling, that we will fight with each other. It's a flag, it's all those icons are things that we should fight about. We are not here week in, week out, fighting over what fire truck to pick, or what car, or this or that. But on these things, we should be spending a little bit more time. And the consensus was brought about for the fact, at least for me, speaking for myself, was to, my God, let's move this and just be done with it. Because I did not want the problem. But then I sat back and said, wait a minute, that's also not fair to you, to just move something forward, that the community isn't going, I love it, but they're also not going, I hate it either. That's a good thing, but it's also one of those things that, if you know anything about Batavia, Batavians also love to hate things, but then love it later. The River Street with the arch, people hated that. They hated the design, they hated all kinds of things. You don't have that anymore because it grows into people. And I feel that that conflict about having some angst and people like it and people hating it, that kinda drives the passion of what really makes up the soul of this community. Because it is a, it always has been to its roots, is kind of a hardscrabble little town on the banks of an industrial little community. We like to fight about things because we like to be passionate about it. Nobody says that it's against you for that very reason. We just like it and we actually want to love it. And that's the part that, when I'm talking with people, everybody likes it, but they're not going out there going, I absolutely love it. And yes, we can change things, we can change this on letterhead as we go forward. But when I heard what Abby said about when it goes on that entryway sign, that's our most, we're putting it in rock and stone, and it's going to be there for, as her family put up the signs, it's gonna last 20, 30 years. So that isn't an easy change of just changing letterhead. That's going to be, whether we like it or not, that's going to be our brand, because those signs were our brand for how long it took. And we kept those because we wanted them here, because it did speak to us. I know Nick had said, you know, 25 years ago, did anybody fight over that logo? Or that, I have no idea. But the reality is, is currently, the world is visual. It does need to adapt and overchange. And that's why we do wanna get it right. I don't think we're fighting to fight, or fighting to design by committee. But if it's also just not individually, and with speaking with residents and fellow neighbors, that it's not just causing a little bit of visceral, I love it, or I hate it, or any of those things, to stir a little bit of passion for our community, that's what's giving a little bit of pause, and then do we have it right? At times, leadership is about being decisive. But leadership is also being able to pull back and go, wait, are we making the right decisions? Because too many times, you just plow through, I'm a leader, I'm supposed to push it. And you push your will onto other people. And that works if we're fully on with, this is what we want, this is what we know the community is. And that's where we're kind of talking it out amongst ourselves. It's not about derailing it. It's, I listened to Scott because he is one of us and because he has a valid opinion. I listened to Mark because he has valid opinions. Those things aren't about derailing it, those things are respect for everybody else's voices on the community. So I, that's the way I look at it.
I need to make just a little correction. Mark, you had talked about this being a permanent change to our logo, such as naming a child. And then we were also talking about the signs being in place for the same amount of time that our current signs have been in place. And I just wanted to point out that when we looked for a design for our new sign, the middle part of it will be replaceable, whereas the stone pillars are, you know, meant to be there for decades and decades. I don't want people to feel like the commitment to this particular logo is something that necessarily has to last, you know, 30 years. Certainly sooner than that, they could decide that times have changed and we'd like something else.
Yeah, and to just, I don't know, to be completely, you know, transparent with the whole process, like I've told other Aldermen here before, I mean, I have nothing but respect for you guys. And I just saw a problem, came in, used what we had, and tried to give you a solution that I thought would work for everybody. Personally, I don't think you guys will ever find a logo that you all like together. I do think it's possible to have more of a consensus on a different one, if you guys feel that it's not capturing what you want. But at some point, I mean, I think this has been worked on, when I was briefed on it, since maybe 2015, you know, it's been four years. And once again, you don't have to go with this, but whatever you do next, you know, really focus and think about what you want to do, or else this will perpetuate. You know, whether I'm not, I'm involved, you guys are gonna be talking about a logo again, and again, and again, and trying to capture Batavia. Meanwhile, cities everywhere are rebranding right now. And a lot of them have already done it. A lot of people go, ooh, maybe I like it, maybe I don't. But then that fades away in like a couple months. And if you have something that's pretty agreeable, the only reason I've been pushing this is because I actually believe in it to be a good representation. No, I don't look at it and get blown away either. And I'm the one presenting it. But I look at it and I go, that's a good representation. I go, I would put that on a business card, I would wear that at home. So that's kinda where my mindset was with it. But just keep those things in mind when you're planning in the future, as I know you do, and that's why you guys are here. But yeah, it's tough.
I just wanted to kind of follow up on that with, a little bit with building consensus on having a bunch of different options. I don't think you have to look any further than the bridge. And all those pieces of art that have been put out there, I know we've kind of like, do we open it up to the community? But that has actually worked very successfully. We have had several options, and we've gotten a lot of entries with those things. And we did generate consensus. The belief that we can't come to a consensus, I think, is a little, that we're scared to go through and make ourselves vulnerable to go through, this is what we're doing with a rebranding, and kind of commit to a design. That's where I think that we're a little more afraid of having that conversation versus actually being afraid to commit to a consensus. We always, week in, week out, after we discuss it, pretty much always do come to a consensus on...
We actually have had a contest, prior to me being here. There was a contest to design the entryway signage. And City Council considered all of those and could not come to any consensus on it, and directed staff to engage in a branding project for the city. And then to, whatever the result of that branding project was going to inform what those entryway signs should be.
And so, but that didn't work out either. Because...
Well, they received the entries.
Let me finish, please. The other part was, we did, they did do a lot of effort and they did gather a lot of information. But they failed because we did not accept it, because it went through. So there are all these options that we do, we have chosen at different times. But if you look back, we did come to a consensus in not accepting the Spark one, because it wasn't the right thing. So on that, you can say it wasn't a consensus to accept, but it was a consensus not to accept it too.
I guess I was looking back to when the city ran a contest for the entryway signs. I think...
25 years ago?
I think it was the beginning of 2016, prior to me being hired. And that because the submittals that were provided to City Council, there was, people liked one, but not the other one. And the decision was made to reject all of those and instead direct staff to engage in a branding study.
That's how I think we got to the, go out and try to do a brand before we did our logo or our street entryway sign. We decided to lump all that together, where the more I think we've gone through this, the more I feel like we need to come up with a logo. And then if we decide that our focus, brand-wise, for the next five years is XYZ, that's what we focus on. And if we can use that with one logo, we can use another tagline or promotion with that same logo. That's how I feel like I want the logo to be simplistic enough that we can use that in different way. Where I think if we try to do it as a full branding project and turn that logo into the brand, then we're not doing the right thing with it, because you can't use it for anything else. That's where I feel like the simplistic one wins.
There's a way to get consensus, so I think back to when Tony filled this seat initially. Everybody interviewed, nobody discussed anything, and we went back there and cast our votes. Majority won. You cast the votes for 2, 3, 1, whatever, and whoever scored the most points, won. We didn't bicker after that, say, oh, jeez, can I change my vote? Nobody did anything. That was it. There was no discussion about it. And so if we were to put it out there and say, hey, here we go, here's the citywide contest or something, and we get 20 things back, and we vote it down, and we get it down to, you know, the five most popular, then we vote again. And you keep on going, all of a sudden you have one. And it's the way I wish normal elections were, is that you get it down to two people and you vote, and then you have a majority choice. And then there's no discussion, because then it's whittled down to something that everybody's gonna accept. It's just a possible way to get us out of what we're doing right now. And this is an entry in that. And then however many are else out there, and all of a sudden you look and you're like, yep, that's the one, and we move on. Could work out that way. I'm not saying it will, but if we just say, we're done discussing it, and we get a submission out there, then we're done. And you take away names, so nobody knows who submitted these things within council, and then you move on.
Nick?
Putting a lot to chance.
Yeah.
In terms of...
But it's not chance, because you're gonna have...
You're okay with what other people's slaps.
We could always keep this one in there and see where it lands up.
That's what I said. Leave it in there.
I'm not necessarily a proponent for that. I'm not against it. I'm not against it.
That's okay. If everybody agreed with me, it'd actually be a cool world.
I think we need to come to consensus that we will never come to consensus. The Bridge statues is a great example. We didn't have a consensus. We all had our own votes, just like that process. And the majority won. And just like Laura said tonight, let's see, who wants to stick with this, who doesn't? Do we wait for another night when everyone's here? I don't know. But we could see, if there's a majority that wants to continue the discussion, let's do it and move on and figure a path of that. But we can sit and talk about designs for six more years.
Well, when we look at with the fact that we have less than 20% of the registered voters in the city that actually vote for us to put us here, how are we gonna get a real representation of what the community really feels is the right logo if we put it out to them? I mean, that's the other tough problem.
Well, we could still vote on it. We don't have to put it out to the city, but if it's a logo designed by a Batavian, and then it's...
I think it kind of is. I would consider this man to be a Batavian.
Did you do the logo, or did somebody else do the logo?
I worked with that person. I do have design background in my education, but there to put little extra spins on it. But I get your point.
But even with the different fonts, we can whittle it down and do a vote.
Again, and you do a blind vote, you do a blind vote, is what I'm saying.
Yes, I agree with that.
And if we do a blind vote...
We've got other people that wanna talk.
I'm not sure if that's possible to do, because it's a public meeting where you are the representatives and you are supposed to cast your vote in public.
We didn't cast our vote in public for...
The appointment of that person is by the mayor.
That's a decision's mayor.
So you were informing the mayor of what you wanted to... So you were informing the mayor of what you wanted to decide in terms of filling that vacancy.
Abby?
To your point about the 20% that vote, the community consensus, are we all in agreement? And I didn't read the whole report, but the Spark research that was done talked a lot about the power of our community, the value of the people, that it's the people that make this place, right? That it's all about a sense of who we are and how we take care of each other. And I love that. I mean, I didn't love their end result either, but I loved that message and that feel. And I think we have consensus that that is, that captures us as a city. I don't know if you all liked the research that they did, or liked the conclusion that they came to, but I like that a lot. And that gave me a reason to love that logo. I didn't love the logo, didn't give me enough reason to love the logo. But I, when I, have you, those of us that have the Batavia Made pin, the little B, have you read the little inscription on the back? You know, it's one company's take on what Batavia is. But when I got that pin and I read that little messaging, I cried. Like, I teared up. And I'm not saying you have to make me cry in order for me to vote for a logo, but that I had that reaction, but I had the reaction to the story that they put behind the pin. You know, they, I think they captured, you know, that essence of Batavia. And that's the only thing that I think this lacks, because I look at it, and I love it. And like I said, I want the business card, and I want the t-shirt, and I want the wineglass. But do I think it captures that essence of our community? That's the part that I'm not sold on. And I get the cumbersome nature of a contest, and getting 4,000 submissions that we have to sort through. But on the other hand, it gives it that story behind it, like, this is the logo we have, and here's the person from Batavia that designed it, and here's the story, you know, that the narrative they gave behind the logo on why they designed it the way it is. And it's like when I give a tour of my house, it takes 45 minutes, because I will tell you a story about every single piece of furniture, because anything that's in my house has some sort of meaning, and I will explain that to everybody. I can't just buy a chair. So I want that, you know, in the logo. Like, I want, I want to share, I want it to share a story to us, and that's the only thing that I think matters.
So I think you said something important in there. And once again, this logo or a different logo, it doesn't matter, I'm just kind of giving my kind of send-off advice on, as we move forward with this, however it's chosen, is that you said you didn't like the logo, but you loved the story of the research. That's still there. You could take that campaign that they had, that said Powered by Neighbors, highlighting members of the community, and you can throw the new logo up there that just looks better subjectively, objectively, and run that campaign. Be in the city for two to three years, highlighting community members and making a strong point. The whole reason, once again, why a tagline is omitted in the strategy and suggestion that I'm presenting, is that we can make that whatever we want. And once again, even if you were to approve something like this, you don't have to bulldoze it, put it everywhere immediately, we don't even have to put it on the website. We can just go, okay, we approved the logo, now let's think about what message we want to put out there. And then now, let's allocate these funds, and that kind of stuff takes a couple of years. And then you go, boom, we've got it. And then at that point, you can be like, ah, you know what? Maybe I don't like how that looks. So you can go, oh man, I'm so glad we have the artwork done, because now we're focusing on the stuff that matters. That's something to keep in mind as well. And then something that's common in government that can be dangerous too, while the message is really beautiful, when it is translated to a graphic art piece, and you add people in to any kind of logo, it always looks pretty bad. And you can see it, I'm not going to name any names, but if you wanted to see some, I could pull up a lot of examples of local government agencies that have people in them, and they just don't stand the test of time as an icon does.
Mike?
Yes. I think we're all in agreement that we do need a refresh. Like you said, Laura, we had 800, and some people participated in the Spark. While we didn't like the logo, I think we did like the story, so there was a story there. Then we hired Griffin, who was a lifetime Batavia person, and we wanted different renditions, and he picked the one that we should see. And out of the three that we, they made, the one you picked was the best, and I trusted him for that. I mean, that's what he's here for. If we do open this up again, I think we should definitely keep a certain timeframe, because I don't think we're ever all going to agree, and this has been going on for four years. We've talked about it, we've had a lot of input on it. There is a story there, we got a lot of data on that. So I just think we have that story. And again, I like the logo, I think it's a good refresh. But if we do open this up again, I definitely think we have to have a timeframe with that and say, hey, guys, this is it, this is the time, let's get it done and be done with this.
Elliot?
And that's where my head's at. Right now, if you ask me to take a vote on this, I'm going to say no. I'm going to pass, because I think it's fine. As I said before, you know, I didn't feel like we had the debate that first night when we agreed to push it forward to council, because we wanted to draw the timeline. We didn't want to sit there and just pass it off to the next cow, and the next cow, and the next cow, allowing for more to seep in. We wanted to make sure that we got to a decision. Well, even within that one week, we already had lost some of that consensus, if you want to call it that, but it wasn't necessarily consensus that this is the one, it was the consensus of, let's get something done. I kind of like in this, like, as I was, we were discussing beforehand, it's not buying a house, but it's kind of like buying a house. You're buying something that you expect to settle into, to stick with, and not just be done with in a month or two, or a year or two, or even five years. You buy a house with a 30-year mortgage, because you're possibly spending 30 years in it. When I look at this, and I think about this is the house, and then I maybe have adjusted, oh, well, there's some other houses out there I would also like to take a look at, that probably means that house wasn't meant for me. Right? So that's kind of where my head's at. I agree, let's put a timeline on this. If we, if we take a vote around, looking at this resolution, and this vote fails, then let's draw a definitive timeline. Let's say from one month from today, submissions are going to be voted on. Something hard, and just call it an end date, and let's be done with this.
Nick?
One, sorry to add on. I have a master's degree in marketing, but I don't do design, so I'm deferring to you, and I defer to Scott and Drew in that. But the one thing I know about marketing is, there's not a logo out there that makes you feel what you feel. It's the attachment to the campaign. The Nike swoosh doesn't do anything, but just do it does. You said you were ready to vote on that one logo, because you got all the feelings that what was behind it. That will come in time, no matter what we go with. And I'm not saying we go with this just to go with it, but keep that in mind, there's not going to be a logo, I don't think. I mean, I, maybe it's cynical, but we can get 800 from the community, and there's a good bet that this is still going to end up in the top three. And the other 797 are going to be like, just a waste of time. But I think we take a vote and see who wants to continue with this, and put a timeline, and maybe, Griffin, you can suggest, here's how we can, options we have to move forward. But I really am against 14 people sitting here and talking about this forever.
Marty?
Yeah, I just know that there's somebody in the audience that did kind of draw a design, actually two. And the first one, I think, was also a good representation, but it didn't sway me one way or either. I didn't hate it, didn't love it, I thought it was, I thought it was good. I know we got another one today. Sorry, it actually did do the, oh, I actually really like that one. And it did do the impactful for me.
But was it the image behind it, or was it just the...
It's the image behind it, and it was the story that went with it. No, but it was, but it was the image, but it was the image that, the idea, the how it was designed, the same way that your messaging for it, I actually have zero problem with, because I think the way your message was for it spoke to exactly. The one today also spoke to me.
Is this something staff's not aware of any other times?
No, there was, there was one that was sent to the city council from a member from the public.
Oh, okay, so we're not aware of that.
Right. So that's why, you know, we're, since we're kind of the ones discuss, deciding on this, it's, you know...
Was it a windmill in a circle?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And a lot of these things are going to be just what, at the end of the day, are going to what speaks to you and those type of things. You can have each of those science sculptures, were kind of similar in that they were all based out of science, or history, or those things. Visually, people will come to it. But Abby just kind of made a point that I thought is actually very relevant. We spent $35,000 on the branding process. The branding process, the part that we got the most out of, is that the community wants to be involved together, and that is what makes things separate about Batavia. We have the community dinner, because we know it, we see it, we feel it, we know that's Batavia. All of the data points that they put together were absolutely spot on. River Street is a success, because that falls into Batavia. So the Spark process that we put together, or that they put together, that we agree with, nailed it, because that is what the community is. I think, and that's where Abby said, the part that is missing is, we're, we have all that data that says the community wants to be involved, yet we're scared to go out to the community and have them involved. Why? Why are we then not capitalizing on what a report that we spent a lot of money on said is our strongest strength?
Yeah, and I just...
Was it reaching out to the community wide, offering them the opportunity to provide feedback into that process? Wasn't that?
And it was. And all I'm saying is, for what's here today and now, we're also not getting that buy-in from the community, because people aren't coming out going, I love it, I hate it, or anything. It's just going to be introduced and accepted, and that's it.
Is that a bad thing?
If you like, if you like adequate. I personally do not feel the community that I live in, the community that I spend all the nights away from my family, shouldn't have an amount of passion from me about a guiding principle and a design. I should be out there championing everything that we do. That's the part that I'm missing, because we're the ones that do go out into the community, and sell this community, and love this community. And that's all I'm saying that is missing just out of this logo. He nailed it with the design. As far as a representation, I do like it. It is not offensive, it is nothing along that line. The story does match, you're right on that.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say to my point earlier, I didn't mean any disrespect to either you or you when you were talking about the logo that I brought up. I was trying to bring up the point that you found something that wowed you. That's the kind of feedback that is great to know. So we go, oh, okay, you really like that, we can make a bunch more of those. Or like you said, we can go out to the community. But that's the kind of input that's really helpful for these kind of things. It just kind of depends where you guys want to go.
But that's the part that I think that no, the other thing that I think we're in agreement on, is we don't want to sit here and find out what each of us likes to be put into some Frankenstein design. We want to have it brought to us and be able to just go, I love it. And whether it's eight or 14, whatever it is, it needs to be kind of the guiding.
So I think you should vote whether or not you like this one. Doesn't have to be tonight, could be another night. Obviously, we have other people ready. And just say, hey, do we want to move forward to this or not? And then move up, open things up everywhere. And then if you wanted to, you can bring it back from the dead later and go, hey, you know what? We looked at stuff, we do remember that one, we want to look at it again. But I think you have a couple of different ways that you guys are talking about where you want to go, and if you could come to a consensus, maybe tonight, on which direction of action you guys would like to take, that would be really great.
Is it some community contest to submit logos over the course of the next 30 days, and staff just gives all those logos to you, and you guys go through all of the logos that have been submitted, and pick out which ones?
And then we'll get blindsided by another one the night we come in to talk about it to try to decide on something we have in front of us.
We'll have 800, and then we'll be looking for that 801st.
First. I mean, nothing against it, Marty, but to bring something up that I haven't even looked at, that one was, when was it sent out to the rest of the council? How many people here, by show of hands, have looked at it in their email?
I just see it right now.
Okay. You know, I mean, I think that that's a little...
I'm not saying to accept that, and that's the way that it goes.
No, but just to add that in, on top of the discussion tonight, you brought it up...
Because we received it, and it's stuff that was received before the meeting. I don't, I can't help that you didn't read it or not. That's, that's pointless. It was something that was brought to our attention. We shouldn't keep stuff out, because we all didn't read things beforehand. You have the opportunity to kind of look at it. It doesn't, we're not settled on that one, or saying that the one that came tonight is a last minute, and we're, oh, we're sneaking this one in for approval. It's the concept of it, that there may be additional out there, only because this one, for me, does not wow.
And fairness, too, we had resistance even before we got this one today.
Right.
I'm going to, no offense, Marty, I'm agreeing with you on things, but because you didn't read it, it's not your fault. Because there's a lot of things I don't read when I get mail on a Tuesday, that I don't read. I don't have the opportunity to read during my work hours. So I read this, I raised my hand, because I just happened to read this at 5:30, 6:30 tonight. So I agree with you, it's not, I mean, it can't just come at us that day. So we can't say, well, because you didn't read it, that now it's all your fault. You know, we need time to read things, we all work, and work hard, all of us, and put long hours in, so we have nights and weekends to read. And so I'll defend you for that.
And I would suggest too, that, you know, I certainly am not qualified to evaluate logos, but I would hope that whatever logos that you're looking at, that you would seek Griffin's advice as a professional, and also the advice of employees from different departments to see how they, you know, would feel about adopting that logo as something that they wear every day as part of their identity as well.
Abby?
Could I add, if we go forward with any sort of a contest, that we get a logo submission with a little paragraph on what it is and what it means to the, to the person, and why they designed it the way that they did, and the story that it tells to them to help us understand where they're coming from. And that was kind of the point I was making with the Batavia Made pin, and what was on the back of it, because, and I get that it's a package deal, that you're seeing the end results. You know, they may have come up with the design of the little B, and then wrote the story later, it's not necessarily tied, you can tie the story to any look, or any logo, but I think for the public, and probably some of us, having it as a package helps to sell it, and helps, it will definitely sell it to the community better, and probably help us evaluate it too. Because I think that's what I hear a lot of people saying too, is that it's lacking the, a connection, that this is just lacking connection. But like, I get that that's not what you had, because the, the, the analysis of, you know, blue being a trusted color, and it being, you know, the very practical pieces of why it's designed that way is absolutely appropriate. And then, of course, we all just have to get emotional about it, so it gets emotional, and then we need like the emotional ties in. So that's the last thing I'm going to say.
From the Spark survey we had done, I do know people that participate, and they participate with passion. So I think we have...
I like the Spark thing. I mean, Powered by Neighbors, people didn't like, I mean, we could have changed the word around. Powered by Commitment. I mean, there was a lot of flexibility with that, and it was pretty simple also.
Right.
You don't have to like that, I mean, it just, we could have, we could have done anything. A tagline, as you say, a tagline is important.
I thought you were saying Powered by Committee, and I knew that wasn't it.
But you know, it's just, I mean, I liked it, we paid a lot of money for it, and I liked it, it was simple. Yours is simple, as I hear you speak to this, I mean, you make a lot of sense to me. And so, I wasn't at the last meeting when we discussed it, I apologize for that. But I think, myself, I'm a... But I, I think myself, I'm opposed to going out to a citywide contest again.
There seems to be discussion on that. How would that be managed? Could that be managed?
I would, in my mind, just thinking about it, I, we would come up with what the parameters were about the specifications that we were looking for. For instance, Alderman Salvati was asking for specific color references so that, you know, it's, we can get it accurate from what it was designed to be. And then we just throw it out there and if we get five, we get five. And if we get 100, we get 100. And then I would pass all of those in a packet on the deadline date to you and probably ask every one of the 14 of you to identify your top 20. Or, you know, whittle it down and then we'll take the 20 and whittle it down to 10 or 5. I guess we would go through that process between now and I guess maybe sometime by the first quarter of next year. I would estimate that we would probably have a logo at that point. And then maybe we do the entryway signs next year.
I, I would be opposed to doing a community-wide at this point. If that was something that was started in the beginning, it would be different. But we have a professional staff that we pay a lot of money to give us their expertise. And I think we find a highly, found a highly qualified candidate here. If we don't like what's there, which I haven't heard, everyone keeps saying, "It's not that I don't like it." And I've heard no one say, "I hate it." I do love it myself. And I've heard a lot of people say they like it. I think we're going to be hard pressed to find something that if there's, that, we'll be hard pressed to find something where there's going to be people that say they love it and not be people that say they hate it. Because when you start to get to the extremes, you get to the extremes. You get, you get the, you know, especially in this day and age in this country, we're polarized. And if we try to find a logo that, that a lot of people are saying they love it, you're going to find people that are going to hate it. With this one, I'm not hearing anyone say they hate it. I think it's simple, I think it, I think the reasoning behind it is excellent. And I don't want to undermine a new hire that has huge potential in this, in this city. And, and one of our own. So that's, that's my feeling on it. If, if the council's not ready to, to move forward this, I think the direction should be to the professional that we hire for his expertise to come back with some other options for us to look at. But to put it out to a community, you're basically undermining a new hire that has huge potential here. And no, that concerns me.
Anybody else want to weigh in on where we're going? I don't think we know. I mean, the other thing we've got to throw out there, too, is if we go back to that, we also got to put the old logo up alongside of it and we just want to keep it. I mean, because I guarantee you, there's going to be people out there saying that.
So why don't we have a vote now to see if we want to put it off? And not that we're going to a citywide contest, but we just put it off. And if the vote comes in that says we don't want to put it off, then we vote on it. That make sense?
I think we need to rephrase that. Either we vote to go forward with this or decide on another path, but to put, I...
That's fine.
Timeline, I mean, it's semantics, but I, I know where you're going.
You know where I'm going with it. I'm not making any motions, I'm just saying, you know, it's out there. We have it in front of us and so...
Right. Do you want to vote on the resolution?
Somebody want to make a motion to say we postpone that? And, and as Scott Salvati would say?
I'll make it clear, I'll, I'll, I make the motion that we go forward with the logo as presented by Griffin. So what's, what's in Resolution 19-92-R as presented?
As presented.
But we didn't talk about any of the other ones, different fonts, but...
No, that, that resolution only has this.
Yeah. You'd have to select a, an Exhibit A. So Nick, are you proposing the top page?
I think, I think Nick was just saying that we go forward with the vote on it.
I did not want the font.
So not that we're voting on it, right?
I think we're voting on whether...
People had some, people had concerns about either voting on it or not voting on it. That they wanted to...
Well, this is committee, I would, I would propose that we go ahead with this logo and come back to decide on, on fonts.
Okay.
At the next committee meeting.
We have three logos.
And if there's no...
They're all, they're all Exhibit A.
No, 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 this is, yeah. This logo with different fonts are...
The reason being, it's an option.
That, that was posted in the agenda, though. What's posted in the agenda does not have the alternative Exhibit A's.
Right, that's true.
Why I said what's in the agenda?
What's posted in the agenda to the community?
Right.
Is what the resolution is.
Right.
And it's not what was handed out.
See, and, and I feel like, too, that if this was a huge thing for the community and they knew we were voting on the logo with this, that place would be full. And there's one person out there right now. So would you like to speak tonight? Would you like to speak about the? Okay. So we have a motion and a second?
We don't have a second.
Yes.
Tony?
And then we're doing the resolution as it appears in the...
As it appears. Which, I'm trying to decide which one of these fonts, somebody help me, which one it is. Is it in the...
No.
Well, I would propose we discuss the font at, at the next meeting, but understand that this is the logo.
So as it appears in the memo?
As it appears in the resolution. Because in the resolution, there is exhibit.
So the resolution has Exhibit A and Exhibit A does not have the other fonts.
Right.
So essentially Exhibit A is the, it's that first page, it's that blue and black one there. It was that spec sheet that you guys saw that had the, yeah. That had all the, the different numbers on it with the Pantone colors, the CMYK and RGB and everything like that.
And that does list which font it is.
That's, that's the one that's that front page that you have. So that's Proxima Nova, yeah.
Come on, piss the vote, piss the vote!
Can you start over? Do you want to sit down?
We can roll call now?
What?
Oh, boy.
Can't, can't make it.
Have you been watching or looking?
No, I haven't.
Okay. We are at the point where we're going to vote on this to determine whether or not we pass what's in the resolution or whether or not we find another path to come up with a logo. So your choice whether or not you want to vote since you just got here. Roll call?
Wait, so we're just voting to move this forward or to move it in another direction? Yay on this, says yay, yay to this.
Right.
Yes.
To approve the resolution as presented in the agenda.
So that, so that we can be clear, there are actually two Exhibit As included with the resolution. One is a lighter blue and one is a darker blue. So we, we should decide on which color.
Well, I mean, I don't know how I can do this, but I wanted to present this where we can, we're moving forward with this, but we will discuss colors and fonts. I think it would be, I think the motion would be clearer that are we voting to, to pass a design that is ultimately going to be finalized, but is designed by Griffin? Is that what the motion is about? We're not designing on this one with this color, with this. We're just saying that we are either going with a Griffin design or not. No matter what.
The direction was on the 13th.
No, that's what I, that's what appears unclear is that we're not voting for this one, this one, this one, nobody, it's not clear.
The direction from the Committee of the Whole Meeting at which the logo design was approved, the direction to staff was to, that they approved of the design, but they were not convinced of what the color should be. So that's why the different colors had been presented. So if you wanted to approve the resolution with the black and white design. But it sounds like you're neither set on color nor font, so...
Right. I want to move forward with this logo and have discussion on color and font.
Have another discussion and have another meeting.
By approving the resolution to move forward or not move forward, we're moving in a different direction, but so there's clarity. If the, if the resolution as presented in the agenda
Yes.
is approved, that does not determine which one of the Exhibit A. It's, it's all of the Exhibit A is still included, is still to be, is still... Which gives a variety of colors and options.
It gives the colors, but it does call out the Proxima Nova Black and Nova Regular as the font.
Well, we'll understand that that's going to be discussed, the font to be discussed.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is Serone made a motion to approve Resolution 19-092-R, adopting a City of Batavia, Batavia logo design with color and font to be determined later.
Perfect. Second.
Well, that'll have to be added then into the resolution because that's not part of the resolution.
I really think you should just make a motion to vote on the resolution. And if this, these colors and these fonts are not appropriate, then you should vote no.
I was looking more for direction or consensus on how we're going to move forward.
True, but I think like you'll have a difference of opinion here whether to move forward with this design in a different color and/or font. And then you will have another camp of individuals who believe that an entirely different logo is appropriate. Both of those people will vote to reject this resolution.
That's why I wanted to leave it loose.
And then the next discussion would be what path forward are, is, does City Council want to take? And you can vote on what direction you're going to provide to staff, whether that be to look for a different logo or to consider different colors and fonts for this logo.
Should we do a straw poll on this design to see if we want to move forward with this design?
Regardless, I don't think that the resolution has any support very, I don't think it has enough support to pass. So the, the resolution itself, I think we need to make a decision on.
I mean, you made the motion, you seconded it. If you're okay to vote on what's in the motion or what's in the resolution, that's what I think we should do.
Well, I just want 12 people here to be clear on what we're voting on. And...
Do you want to use this logo or not? That's what we're voting on.
Right. Knowing that if you choose to use this, we're still going to discuss what color and the fonts will be. Which is, which the resolution as presented in the memo...
Well, it specifies one specific font, but we're clear. But it's probably...
Right.
Do we need any more discussion? Are we ready for a roll call?
I would like clarification on the motion.
Is to pass the resolution as is.
Hmm, it's to accept the design, but not necessarily the color or the font.
This is, I'm going to...
This amendment is amended.
This resolution, and, and we have to go to City Council with anyways. So I'm proposing we move forward to City Council with this design. At City Council, if we choose to change colors or fonts, we can do that. So we're not necessarily adopting anything tonight. But I want to know if we move forward with this or are we opening this up to a citywide, you know, or are we going to start talking about a different path? But let's see, at least vote on this. I've proposed that we move this to City Council as is. Second.
We have a motion by Serone, second by Malay.
Okay, and so what I'm hearing is to approve Resolution 19-092-R, adopting a City of Batavia logo design with color and font decided at City Council?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Well, that would be an amendment then to the resolution.
If we choose to. Motion is the resolution as amended.
And that was moved by Serone and seconded by Malay. Any more discussion?
Roll call.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden absent. Miller?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
Beck?
No.
Knopf?
No.
Chantet absent. Salvati?
No.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
No.
Meitzler?
No.
Malay?
Aye.
And Uwer?
No.
Six to six.
He's got some places he's got to be. Shockingly away from the microphone for a while.
I'll vote aye.
Motion carried.
So it'll go to the council with the seven-six recommendation.
We could do this all over again.
We have two more to vote then.
Yeah. Okay. We will move on to number six.
Before we move on, I do want to be clear, I think there is consensus that there was no undermining of your efforts in this and we all like it. It's just, it's an emotional thing that we want to be sure on.
Yep, absolutely. And once again, it's still not definitive and you guys haven't voted it in. And I want you to know that I have, once again, deep respect for everybody here, grew up here. This is just one proposal and I thought it was well-fit. And should you decide that it's not in the future, that's okay, too. Just trying to help and I'm always going to be here as a resource for anything that you guys need.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Griffin.
So next up is number six, our discussion on Strategic Action Plan for 2019 Second Quarter Update.
Okay, as we did after the first quarter, we'd like to give a second quarter update on the activities that have taken place on the items in the strategic plan for our second quarter. So the first part is transportation. And under transportation, our goals are to investigate the feasibility of a train commuter parking lot, establish long-term goals and a funding plan for a potential second bridge and identify and enhance safe walking and biking routes to and through downtown. So on the first item up there is investigate the feasibility of the parking lot for train commuters. During the second quarter, we had a number of great conversations and then an in-person meeting with Pace because we thought they probably have a great deal of experience in seeing what types of commuter parking lot situations have been successful and which have not been successful. They shared with us on these shorter commutes that the type of commuter lot is not as popular. However, they did let us know that Pace actually has a couple of options for commuters and one of which they're going to be making an improvement so that they'll have an app that's similar to an on-demand ride that is similar to Uber and is $2 a ride. And it's a subscription service. The other thing that they have is for anyone who is a group of commuters of, I believe it's five or more, the Pace will actually loan the individual who is a driver a vehicle and that all of those individuals can commute together using a vehicle provided by Pace. So we have invited Pace to come in and give a presentation to us in September. I'm trying to, I think it's September 10th is when they will be here. And they want to present to you what these options are. And then perhaps you can decide if we still need to, with those kinds of option, transportation options available, do we still need to... to pursue, with those kinds of option, transportation options available, do we still need to pursue something that would require an investment on our part, or is Pace answering that sort of last mile need for our commuters? We are, in addition to that, we are reaching out to Uber and Lyft in other metropolitan areas in the United States. They are creating last mile programs. They do not yet have a last mile program rolled out here in Chicago, but that doesn't mean that if certain municipality were to express an interest, maybe they'd list up the list. So, yes.
So, just on the, my curiosity has peaked, on this, on the five commuters or more, they would provide a vehicle?
Yes.
Gas included?
I believe, yes.
At what cost?
I don't think that there's any cost to them. Mayor, do you want to talk beyond the Pace Board? Are you familiar with the program? I mean, I would really like, I don't want to answer questions about their program. They'll be here shortly, September 10th, to talk about it.
That's, I mean, that's amazing.
Isn't it?
It really is. That's a really cool option.
If I recall, I think everyone but the driver pays a fee.
Oh, okay.
Driver gets it for free.
The driver gets it for free, and they did say that the driver can also use the vehicle for some personal use.
Can we get that information?
Who needs a representative?
Xavier Paulson, the Laurel Lynn apartment.
Yeah, exactly.
Right.
Right.
We have these, I say we, Pace has these van pools all over the region, and they are very successful. Pace has an issue, and I'll tell you simply what it is. If you've got riders, we got a bus. But if you tell us, well, gee, we'd like to have you come to Batavia every day and pick up people and take them to the Geneva Train Station, and you can tell us, okay, every day you're going to come, we're going to have 50 people waiting to get on your bus, there won't be any problem. But every day if we come and there's nobody there, or there's one there, that's not going to be here very long, and we have an out in our contracts that if you don't have the riders, we don't continue the service. And we've had to eliminate a lot of routes throughout the whole region recently because things change and people don't want to ride the bus anymore, or they don't, or whatever their issue. So, this van pool program that we have is vans that we buy en masse, and then we put them, and you have to be able to show us that you have the riders, and every day that bus is, that van is taking people to a given location, and then at the end of work, they get in the same vehicle and come back home, or go to the, you know, there's some that I believe do drive to the train stations, but the guy runs around the town and picks everybody up, and then they go to the train station, and everybody shares in the cost of the, of the gas and the maintenance and all that kind of good stuff. It's working. I mean, it's an easy way to move a lot of people that, but the biggest thing is, you know, I will tell you that I doubt whether we'll have these fixed route bus lanes in Batavia and a lot of other places in 10 years because the riders just aren't there anymore. One of the smartest things we've done is we've put this bus-on-the-shoulder program in there, which is, there's now one on I-55 from Shawna Han into the University of Chicago campus in Chicago, and we started it with three, and now we got 26. It's that many people, and they park, they go and they park at different places in Bowling Brook and Joliet, and the bus comes off and picks them up, and then they take them into Chicago. And the shoulder thing is, is that when we get to a congestion moment where there's 25, 50, 100 cars backed up, we have the legal ability to go onto the shoulder and go around the backup. Now, if anybody decides they're going to get in their car and follow us, if they go probably more than a quarter mile, they're going to be photographed, including their license plate, and then they're going to get probably about a $300 ticket in the mail for going into that bus lane. It's working. I mean, we have had significant success with this. Now, we're doing it up in Elgin. It starts at Randall Road, and you park your car there for free, and then we get, you get on the bus, and we start, and we go over to Route 59, and we get off there, and we pick up a few more people. Then we go to Barrington Road, we pick up a few more people. Then we go to Meacham Road at Schaumburg, and we pick up either, a lot of people get off or get on. We have a shuttle then that runs from the Pace Bus Point into Woodfield and all the other stuff. And then the bus continues east and goes to the Rosemont Transportation Center, where you can then, you paid $1.75 to get you there. Then you have two options. You can take 50 cents out of your pocket and get on the CTA line that runs down the middle of the Kennedy Expressway, and you go downtown, or you can pay 50 cents and go on this shuttle that takes you right into O'Hare Airport Terminal. And if you want, you can bring your luggage with you, as long as you don't overload us, and we'll let you take a couple suitcases. And so, to go to O'Hare Airport from Elgin, if somebody can drive you up there, you can get on the Pace Bus, and it's $2.25 from Elgin into O'Hare Airport, and then you're not paying a limo or a taxi, or your relatives don't have to worry about getting you in or getting you out and whatever. So, again, that's very popular. Now, we started with three buses up there. Now, I think we're maybe the nine or 10, but we're only about a year into it, and the service grows more every month. So, these specialized transportation systems are working very, very well in the region, but the old-style bus running up and down the street, I kind of shudder every time I see it up on Batavia Avenue or out on Randall Road, and there may be one person sitting on that bus. Well, that's telling me that a year or so from now, we're probably not going to have that bus there anymore, because they got to have the riders. We just can't run these buses all, these larger buses up and down the region without having people on the bus.
Are they being subsidized by the cities or the county?
They're being subsidized by the RTA.
Okay.
That's where the half-cent sales tax is coming from.
Right.
And that's the big issue we have down in, our friends in Kendall County who want Metro and Pace service and all this, but they don't want to join the RTA. I don't know how they're, think they're going to go much further than they are right now without doing it, because the RTA, when you get on a Metro train or a Pace bus, there is a subsidy for your ride, the overall cost of that ride with that driver and the stops and the insurance and the cost of the vehicle and everything else. That's a lot of money, and the sales tax is what makes up the difference between the fare and what it's costing us to provide the service.
Any other questions about the commuter lot project?
We'll see Pace in September.
Yes, September 10th.
I would just, just make a comment. You know, I had some people say, why don't we create a big lot someplace and let everybody drive their car there, and then we don't have to go to Geneva? Well, you're going to have to give us a lot of riders to make that work, and our experience with that is it may or may not work. There is going to be some crunch in Geneva though, because part of the whole parking lot there at the train station on the south side of the tracks is all coming out, and that's going to be the third rail, the third rail line that's going to go through there, and they've already got the pylons in the middle of the Fox River to take that train across the river. In the next two or three years, that will occur, and there'll be less parking at Geneva than there is now because you're going to lose a bunch of it to that. And I don't think there's much, we got, at CMAP, we got Pace money, or the City Geneva money to build two more tiers on that original parking garage up there. So, they got three levels up there now, but it's filling up, and the ridership on the Metro trains is staying pretty heavy. And if you go up there during the daytime, early morning, there's Pace buses sitting there doing this reverse shuttle. We got one, I believe now, that's running to the Batavia Industrial Park, and they go as far as Fermi Lab, and they drop, stop some people at DNS Container and other places, and that's pretty good because we got the riders. But if I don't have the riders, I'm not going to have the bus.
Okay, so moving on to the second transportation goal, which was to create a plan for a potential second bridge. I can recall when this was first placed on to our strategic plan, that we felt that there was an overwhelming community support for a second downtown bridge. Since then, I feel that the, perhaps feelings have changed about that a little bit, and that perhaps we should bring the prioritization of that second bridge back to City Council for a discussion as to, you know, relative to the other matters that we have in our strategic plan, where we would prioritize that. This, oh, go ahead, Alderman Meitzler?
I was just going to say, I would absolutely support that. I think, given everything that we've heard from you, Mr. Mayor, about level of state and federal funding that may become available, it sounds like any plan for a second bridge is going to fall primarily on our city's shoulders to bear the brunt of.
Yes.
This is probably a lot more than we want to tackle, given the state of finances for the state and the federal level, especially if we're not going to get any grant money or reliable grant money. And I definitely embrace what we saw as well from Peggy in terms of the notion of what's going to be happening with our reserve funds over the next several years, that this is one of those things that if I'm looking across all the strategic plan, I would definitely support putting on hold for the time being. I would rather put staff time towards the road diet or something else.
No, I just want to jump in and say, I'm not going to argue with what you're advocating, but I think it would be good for us to have some traffic study work done. We need to have some professional technical background. If you're going to start talking about road diets and everything else, we got to have some solid data and some professional engineering done by somebody that shows that that can be accomplished thing.
Your Honor, can you use the microphone, please?
The other thing I would note is, is that, you know, we are congesting downtown Batavia at certain times of the day. I mean, when you let Batavia High School out at 2:35 or whatever it is, we back you up over here now for about 40 minutes before it kind of clears itself out. We have the same problem in the morning, and I guess, if nothing else, I'd like to have somebody come in and take a look at our stoplight network and our timing on our stoplights, and maybe adjusting some of the intersections for more bigger turn lanes, or maybe widening some of them a little bit, or whatever needs to be done, because I think we do have a traffic congestion issue here that we should not ignore and understand how it could move across, because there are times in the day, you know, there's certain times, the east, going east is really backed up. I've seen it backed up to Harrison Street a couple times recently, and on the east side, in the afternoon, about 3 o'clock, 3:30, Wilson Street backs up from Prairie, probably almost back to Batavia Apartments. I've seen it on occasion, and that's a slow one because you're at a four-way stop there. And, you know, I think we do may have some opportunity to get that Wilson Prairie intersection funded for some work in the near term. And if that's the case, you know, we'll have a stoplight there and some other stuff going, but we need to have, I think, a better coordination of our lighting in this than what we may be. The county, I know, comes in every couple or three years and looks at Randall Road, and they readjust the lights out there with some regularity as to how long they're lasting and based on what their county is, the car backups and the times of day, and it's a pretty intricate system as to how they do it. But I would suggest that that, it's something we really need to have some professional advice on, instead of just us out here winging and prying it and everybody saying, oh, I think this should go. We really need to get somebody in here that knows something about this.
Didn't we do that, Mr. Mayor, about five years ago, something like that with the lighting, though we might be due now for-
It's a few years. I'm just saying, the lights sometimes get power outages, and they slow themselves down and get out of sync, and it needs to be looked at, I think. Public Works does a nice job. I'm not complaining at all about them, but I think we're just getting an overwhelming number.
The volume's changing. It looks like-
I would suggest, if you don't believe it, go and look at Batavia High School now that we're back in school, and as Dan Yule and I joke, as the year goes on and more people turn 16, or mom and dad buy them a car, whatever have you, the lines going down Western Avenue and Millview Drive get longer and longer and longer. And last year, we ended up down at Danforth. Now, that's a heck of a haul down there, and the bet is we'll probably be south of that, we'll be down to Town Avenue or something one of these days with the way that, but it's a growth thing during the year. So, right now, we're at the easy part. Wait till Christmas and after the first of the year.
Yeah, I agree that we need to do a very comprehensive traffic study, because you're never, unless we put in an eight-lane highway, we're never going to make it, the travel to Batavia High School as quick as it is right now. So, we can't design our roads for the school starting and ending. We have to design our roads for what is the most common use of the roads, and the information, Gary, that you provided that showed all that timing that it's, and Abby, you've said this before, I mean, we're talking a four or five-minute difference. It's just not worth it. I mean, I really don't need to be worked four minutes faster. I can, I can survive. My workday will still, my office can deal without me for an extra four minutes if need be. So, I think people really need to put that in perspective, and I think unfortunately, what happens is the complaints come when it is really, really bad, and they say, oh, we need a second bridge. I'm sorry, $20 million is not worth a four-minute problem. I mean, we have much bigger problems to solve for than four minutes.
I think you're more, not more than $20 million.
Yeah, just Strong Towns did a, they had an article on this, and I think, you know, something to the effect of, is it, is it a problem or is it an inconvenience, right? And, and so, I'm all for, if we, you know, if maybe the lights, the timing of the lights would help, that, you know, that's, but yeah, if it's, if it's a couple times a day and it's an extra four minutes, you know, I, you know. Now, if we do think it's sometime down the road, if we think we are sometime down the road going to site a second bridge, because I know at one point, we have it sighted, you know, a block north of the current bridge, it's something we need to think about, so we can vision for it. Not that we have to put money towards it, but I'm just saying, if we think at all that we are going to be, that we're going to have a second bridge sometime down the future, it needs to be worked into our, into our vision.
I would say, I would say to them, sorry, it's just, because Helen and I were here when we were doing all that, and there was a lot of politicking, a lot of discussions on citing that second bridge to Webster. I mean, that took a lot of effort, and I wouldn't go looking to cite the second bridge anytime soon until we know we're going to be doing a second bridge, because that's just going to be wasted energy, because it's going to change again in five years.
Right.
And so, I would also say, keep our eye on the ball, like not have to invest a lot of effort and time into the second bridge. But if we see, I know, Mr. Mayor, you say that there's no money, but they do get tax dollars every year, the federal government and state government, and they do have to spend that money. And I know, if there's anything that does come up available in the next five or 10 years, we should always be keeping our eye on getting that money, because the city will eventually need and require a second bridge.
To that point, staff had brought up the potential, and, you know, we just have to discuss the feasibility, but I didn't see it in prior bridge discussions, to talk about something that would be more of a regional transportation advantage, meaning maybe we go further south and have that be something that connects Orchard, Mooseheart, and goes across the river as a resource for North Aurora and Batavia and Kane County in general. Perhaps by thinking that way, we might open ourselves up to more potential funding.
I would just like to add, you know, while it is an inconvenience, more so right now when, you know, spending four minutes, my thought on the bridge, the second bridge has always been, we're planning, we should plan that we're going to be successful in revitalizing our downtown and bring more people down there. And along with that, bringing more people down there, it's not going to be four minutes, it's going to be more than that. So, while I'm not, I understand we do have it in the strategic plan, I'm thinking further out, we need to plan as if we will be successful, trying to do. And, you know, just looking at more regional things is certainly an option. Just to follow up on that thought, which I think is brilliant, you know, I met with Congresswoman Via last week to talk about our energy issue and vision for the river, actually. But when you, and when you start talking about multiple jurisdictions, if you're talking about Kane County, you're talking about the state having an interest in this, now, now you're starting, that's interesting to them. I think if you, if you could reframe the conversation, since it's not just a community issue, it's a regional issue, because it is. Look at Fabian, look at the bridge right now, what that's doing to us.
Yes.
Right, to everyone.
And thank you for bringing that up. When we talk about the river, we're going to be talking about that regionally as well.
Exactly. And so, if you can reframe that, that discussion as one that's more county at a minimum, now you're talking about a bigger piggy bank.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Yeah, I think as Scott brought up about the Strong Towns article, what are we trying to create when we're putting in a second bridge? What's the goal? Is it to move people through town quicker? Well, that kind of defeats all of the planning that we're doing for the downtown, because we don't want people hauling through the downtown. So, that's kind of counterproductive to what we're trying to do. The other part about the lights, there's a second part about that, which is the lights could be long, short, whatever we adjust it to. There's a problem with- it to. There's a problem with, that is not being addressed, which is everybody crowding into the intersection and staying there when they can't get through. The intersection is not clear. So, then that creates further backups because then those cars aren't able to, and that just creates more stacking. That's not related to a bridge. That's not related to, to the lighting. That's related to people not paying attention to driver's ed 101, that you don't enter an intersection until you are safely able to exit it.
Just as a little refresher for people that weren't here, the regional aspect of the bridge probably is not going to happen down at Orchard Road because there is, I think it's the green horse sucker that's in the river down there, that we won't be able to put anything into the river, build pylons to build a bridge across it. And there's, I think it's 75 housing units that were built in the corridor that they wanted the bridge to go through to get across the river on 25. And to come through there, they actually had a corridor designed and it came back out to Butterfield. I mean, this has all been thought of and proposed and been out there. So, a regional bypass bridge is probably not anywhere in the future without millions and millions of dollars of acquisition of housing that's already out there. So, that's probably not going to happen down at Orchard. The second thing is, is everybody has to remember, we cited a bridge in a place that I dot will not approve it because the state Route 25 has to have left-hand turn lanes, and there's no way to put the amount of traffic in left-hand turn lanes at 25 and Wilson in a block or somewhat less than a block. So, what we've already picked for a corridor won't work. And so, if we do have to do this, it's going to definitely be south, and it's going to end up being more of a hybrid bridge that would be between a regional bypass and a downtown circulator. So, those are the things to remember. And if we ever want to do it, we have to start putting away money now. For even, even if there is grants out there, we're going to have to have money. My thought is, is we figure out what we think is an appropriate amount to start that at, start doing it now. And in 20 years, if we can't build a bridge, that becomes road money for infrastructure. We know we're going to need that. We know we're always going to need that. But if we don't start planning it now, we will never have a chance to build one. You know, St. Charles did it, I don't know how many years ago.
Twenty years.
And they ended up splitting it between multiple bridges when they were originally decided to build one that they were going to put that money away for. So, I think it's something we have to figure out how that fits into the plan and do it because if we don't have anything started now financially, we'll never, no matter what plans we do, we'll never get one built.
No, I agree that we need to start putting away money, kind of like at home when you put away money to home improvements. You don't necessarily know what the home improvement is. You might have 10 different things you want to do. And then when you have the money, you're like, okay, this is what I want to do with it. So, we have to start saving money no matter what because we've got bridges and dams and bike paths and riverbank stabilization to take care of.
Well, I mean, I know you remember it, Alan, also, is, it was 2009 or 2010, Batavia Enterprises was bringing Alderman in and discussing with them to cite the bridge. You call that because they wanted it on Webster Street. We cited on Webster because they were going to do a large multifaceted development down on Shumway. And maybe we can try to get them to the table again to do that development, which would be nice because then that would generate a lot of sales tax revenue and property tax revenue. Then maybe we can start putting some dollars away for a bridge and, you know, kind of make that move a little faster. And I think a bridge, again, is important to our city, to our downtown because if we cite it in our downtown, brings people to our downtown, like Tony was just saying. We want people to come in. We, you know, we're looking to do West Washington, One Washington Place. We're looking to bring people in and move people about in our city. And vehicles, as much as I hate to say it, are a part of that movement and where I'd rather have it be more pedestrian, but we still have to accommodate, so.
Abby? Um, to your point, I was reviewing the downtown development plan from 2002 or whenever that was, and it says it in there that, you know, the uncertainty over a bridge is causing delay and uncertainty on the part of developers who don't know the scope at which they can develop these parcels down there on Shumway over there on the other side of the river. So, whatever we do, it would be great to be real definitive right now. This option won't work. This option won't work. This option might work. We're going to put money away now. And if we're going to put money away, that signals, hey, this area is still uncertain. And if we're not willing to put money away now, then we take it off the table. We take it out of the strategic plan so that we say, okay, this area is up for grabs. Let's develop it with what we can do.
I 100% agree with you, and that's why I talked about the vision of this, is that, you know, we can say, well, we can save a couple bucks a year for a bridge, but if we have no idea where we're going to want to put it, it does nothing to incentivize developers to, you know, to bring their wares into town. So, that's, you know, and I know we've talked to the past about maybe it needs to go further south, you know, whatever that looks like. It's, whatever it is, it's going to require us to be creative, but it's going to require us to plan and to have a vision for a complete, you know, to Marty's, what do we want to accomplish with it? Do we want to make a circulator? Do we want it, do we want it to be a bypass? What is it that we want to do? Whatever it is, whether we're in or out, we need, if we're in, we need to decide what it is so we can be definitive about it so then people can buy into it. Because if we don't, then it's just going to float down forever.
So, we will be having further discussions about that second bridge. Great ideas. I took a lot of notes. The next transportation objective was to identify and enhance safe walking, biking routes to and through downtown. The first action under that was to work with Geneva to explore a sidewalk connection to the metro station. And in quarter one, staff met with Geneva and they said, that's great, but here's the problem is that there is no crosswalk or pedestrian crossing on the west side of the intersection of 31 and Fabian Parkway. And that would be a KDOT project. So, when KDOT gets around to doing the improvements to that intersection, and we all had a big laugh about that, about making, adjusting that weird angled intersection. Well, then low and behold, we were invited to a meeting in the second quarter of the year with the Kane County Board Chairman and KDOT. And they said, we really would like to work on this and showing us, you know, some potential ideas for that. And that included a crosswalk. So, now this item is kind of back on the table. It's certainly not in the short term, but it's nice to know that our neighbors in Geneva are in favor of working with us to maybe accomplish the ability for people to walk up Batavia Avenue all the way to the Geneva train station. So, that's kind of on track, but I'm not sure that there's going to be much more activity there until Kane County Division of Transportation has more specific timeline for that project. Does anybody have any questions about that one?
You know, the one comment I would make is, going way, 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 way back, I can remember sitting in a meeting with the then-county board chairman, and he was quite incensed at Geneva's attitude at the time about sidewalks on Batavia Avenue. So, he ordered the county highway superintendent to figure out to the exact inch where the Batavia-Geneva sitting limits are. And if you want to know where they are on Batavia Avenue up there in front of Campana, that's where that sidewalk ends is where the Batavia-Geneva boundary is. And the other thing that's up there is there is one pretty significant barrier just north of the old Houghton-Mifflin Building in Geneva. There's some, I think they're unincorporated houses that are in there. And there is a hill and a whole bunch of other stuff. It's going to take a lot of engineering and construction to get that sidewalk built in front of those two houses that are north of, across from Fabian's there on north of Houghton-Mifflin.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a little frustrating because it's like, they're just waiting and they're just deferring, basically, waiting for KDOT to do something. And I'm also curious as why that isn't also a state issue because it's a state road. Why is it up to Geneva to put a road next to or a sidewalk?
KDOT? Because it's the Fabian Parkway?
No, no, no. 31 is a state road. So, is it up to the community to always put a sidewalk next to a state road?
They don't buy, build sidewalks. They should.
Another thing to be frustrated about.
31, they don't even, in some places, they don't even build curbs. We love a sidewalk.
I think they have all under congestion mitigation to put sidewalks to get people to walk instead of, instead of...
A CMAC grant, right?
And for Geneva to wait on KDOT, I mean, all they're saying, I mean, anybody in Geneva's listening, I mean, the city is just basically saying, we don't care whether or not our residents can get to the train.
Well, we are too because people need to cross the intersection across that traffic.
I understand that. But they're basically saying, hey, if you live in Geneva and you live on 31 or right there, we don't care. We're not building a sidewalk for you until KDOT puts a sidewalk or a crosswalk in that it lets Batavians get to.
They weren't concerned about kids getting to school on sidewalks. So, I doubt they're concerned about commuters getting to the train on sidewalks.
They were really interested in having shoppers get to Third Street. So, I can say that they really, you know, they expressed no concern about getting that sidewalk in there when it's safe for people to do so. It behooves them to do it. There's upside for them. The next is to identify and enhance the walking and biking routes to and through downtown. There's a nice, healthy group of stakeholders who have done a lot of work and several meetings to come up with some great suggestions for improvements. And so, that list of potential areas that we can work on and coming up with a timeline on how we could accomplish those, we'll be talking about those in conjunction with our annual budget discussions. And then also, what was part of this project was wayfinding signage. So, at such time as we have determined what a new logo is, we are poised to work with our Main Street organization to collaborate on creating some wayfinding signage, which would be a big, huge advantage for our downtown businesses so that people who are walking and biking know what great businesses that we have in our downtown. The next area is our downtown development. And under this category of strategic plan items, we have to review and revise the development incentives and policy, improve service and quality of processes, and increase availability of public parking downtown, and then to create a development plan for our downtown. So, the first of these is to create a development plan for downtown. And we provided the existing plans to city council and had a meeting about that just recently on July 30. And at that point, it was decided that there's a lot of good work in those documents, that there are a number of things that we have already accomplished that are part of those plans. But certainly much of what is in those plans is yet to be accomplished. And so, what we took from that was that city council would like to take an inventory of the work that has been done and what is still planned in those documents and utilize that to prioritize moving forward with the streetscape plan and also the downtown development plan. The next is review and revise the development incentives and policy. And in the first quarter, the Gateway Improvement Program was approved. And at the most recent city council meeting, we approved the very first grant to Funway. We continue to receive applications for those grants. So, we look forward to participating in some more programs that are going to beautify the look of those businesses that people see as they make their approach to our downtown. Also, the process and service quality improvement. In the month of June and, I'm sorry, May and June, we provided to more than 100 city employees two programs. One was for conflict resolution and the other was for customer service. Additional planned improvements, we're making revisions to our zoning code. And the building code update is expected in the third quarter. We are near to launching our online permitting process as well as looking forward to the Viewworks implementation. Our asset management software that we use in Public Works should also have a 3-1-1 aspect to it. In other words, the residents being able to online submit a claim for service. Howard Chasing covered that as part of his mid-year presentation. And also, the, we had a goal to increase the availability of public parking spaces downtown. As an initial matter, community development is creating maps that show not only the private but the public parking inventory that is available downtown for the basis of a discussion as to whether we have a problem with the number of parking spaces, the place where parking is available, or is it merely a perception problem and we're not communicating to people where they can conveniently park to visit areas of our downtown. So, that discussion is still to be coming here. And then we get to the river. So, in the second quarter, staff from both the city and the Park District, we met with John Rabchuk, who is a part of the Activate the River Project in St. Charles, which is members of the Fox River Coalition, their downtown partnership, and the City of St. Charles, all collaborating together to create a vision for the future of their river. Entertainment uses, development along the banks of the river, they have developed a plan that they have now submitted to the St. Charles City Council. As part of those discussions, we also became aware that the City of Geneva is also taking a look at their riverfront to provide for some improvements that would provide for recreational use of their river. Now, if Batavia were to do the same, perhaps you would have a navigable course of river from, all the way from St. Charles down to North Aurora. And those are the, what Alderman Salati was mentioning before, suddenly, when you have a number of communities together, this becomes a regional economic improvement that perhaps can invite some state or federal grant funding. So, that's kind of what we're looking at there.
So, just to go back to on my discussions with State Rep Via, she got really excited about that.
Great.
Considering, I mean, her, most of her, you know, her areas included, we started talking about Kane County because a lot, a big portion, probably the biggest chunk of the rivers in Kane County. And she, to that, she's going to be starting to push this forward.
Great.
So, I know she has an environmental meeting in September. I don't know if it's going to come up then because I think she's talking to the state. So, but she was excited about it.
I will reach out to her because I felt that when we had our Metro West drive down to Springfield, although the new head of the Illinois Department of Natural Resources was only nine days on the job at the point that we discussed it with her, she seemed pretty excited about looking at it. You know, they've been looking at it as a safety perspective to remove these dangerous low-head dams that are a danger for drowning in the boil. But to kind of change that and say, not only is it improving a safety issue, but it could create a huge economic draw for the area for tourism. This water tourism across the country, areas that have made investments like this have seen an enormous return.
And then stressing the environmental part of it too, because we all know the dam shouldn't be there. And it's not good for the fish, and it's not good for the ecosystem of the river. So, there's multiple facets that we need to make sure every single one of those points is mentioned. Because if you go economic and somebody's like, and she's talking to an environmental group, you're going to be like, we don't care. We care about the environment. And then it was totally missold.
And that's one of the things I brought up with her, the whole riffling system.
Yes.
And that's part of the St. Charles plan. Because that takes, in St. Charles, it takes from the railroad bridge down to, under the current dam. That's a seven-foot drop. And that riffle will allow that to do it. And so, you could do the same thing, you know, in just north of our dam.
Well, and doing a riffle here would save the pond as well.
Yeah.
Because you keep the river... Because you keep the, the river actually ends up staying at the same level, and it just makes it easier for the fish to get where they want to go. And then that's not creating, um, causeways and, and they're ripping out the causeway in Geneva because of the issues that the causeway in Geneva is causing, no pun intended there, but if we're putting a causeway in, that's going to go against probably what IDNR wants, so.
Okay, and, uh, the, uh, last two areas on the, uh, strategic plan, I'll let, uh, Gary address, because they have to do with the, um, funding for the riverbank stabilization, as well as, uh, funding our infrastructure. Um, but before I turn things over to Gary, I would ask you to take a look at the one-page document, um, that is a summary of our strategic plan, our vision and mission statements, our fundamental values, as well as the goals that we establish for twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three. And, um, if these are things that, uh, you see the need to make any change to, one thing that I might, um, suggest for an amendment for twenty twenty, if after the PACE conversation, we determine that, uh, we do not have an interest in continuing to pursue a train commuter parking lot, perhaps under transportation, we could substitute road diet? If that makes sense?
I guess I don't want to subs- well, I'd want road diet in there no matter what. I guess is that, I mean, if we're going to be doing traffic studies, that's, that needs to be an option on the table, I don't want to say, well, if, if PACE doesn't do this, then, then we can do a road diet. I think a lot of us have already said the road diet is something we need to.
Oh, yeah.
It should just be added.
Sure.
The other part about, like you were just saying, necessarily pulling it off, like the mayor had said about that third line going in, I mean, there's a thousand people that are commuting out of that lot. And those lots and that parking garage are already completely full. So if you're going to take more parking out of there, where are people going to park? And if we now kind of are short-sighting ourselves as saying, no, we can pull it back because there's no need, then we're not actually looking long-term into those very things that we know are coming. And we're pulling off those things that we know are going to be a problem, that's going to be a lot more short-sighted than just the, oh, it's not a problem today, or we don't have this today. That's not why we're establishing some of these things, is for remediating some of the, the problems that we're having today, it's those issues that we're going to have in the future. We know they're coming.
And one of the things we'll explore too, um, I know that when Geneva was building their parking garage, um, similarly, they had a, a, you know, some of their parking that was not available during that time, and they established alternative parking lots in their downtown with shuttle buses that would then take people back to the station. But in addition to that, we should see, you know, what are their plans?
Well, and it's just, we're growing, so we're growing, there's already a problem, it's going to be a worse problem, and we're going to continue to grow. What's the solution?
We'll have a road diet, everybody will take their e-bikes down Batavia Avenue to get to the train station.
Ridesharing, because I'd love to know how many cars sit up in that train station up there?
Bike share.
Where, where they have one person driving that car.
Yeah, in an event that they don't use their bikes. Um, it, I mean, it, I mean, as opposed to building one big, huge, surfacy, you know, parking lot, maybe there is some, you know, we, there's some things that we can do to reuse, there's open lots right now, if there's, you know, that we can use, and, um, you know, kind of temporary, temporarily moving things around, uh, to make better use of that.
To, to Mayor's point, as long as there is the ridership, so if, if someone is willing to take a car trip and a bus trip to the train, and then after the train, a bus trip to a car trip.
Or even, even if it's a commuter, a commuter lot, I mean, for, I mean, if you're talking about someone who's, who's got a van, you know, down by the river, and is going to be, you know, you're kind of driving five or six people every day.
Mm-hmm.
They meet at one spot and use, and, you know, repurpose that lot for that purp- for that purpose. Doesn't just have to be a bus, but it could be something a little bit, you know, think outside the box a little bit.
Because I wasn't here when this came up, we're charging for people to park in this lot though, right, or is it free?
There, uh, wasn't any discussion about how the fee structure would be taken care of. Uh, any other changes that you'd like to see to the strategic plan? Is it going well? Do you like this strategic plan? Do you feel like it keeps your eyes on the prize, or?
I like that we're coming back to it.
Right, I like the format.
Okay.
It's much better than, you know, every couple of years, sitting down and saying, wow, we really do any of the things that were on there, wow, we got one thing done. Well, it's good, check one off. It's good to have a regular refresher on, to make sure that we're, are thinking about it, because I think there are things like the traffic study and road diet, I mean, that has now risen to the top, I think, you know, and, and things we've been discussing lately, so I think it's something that has to be added to there, and then that way it keeps us on it and we get it done.
Mm-hmm.
One of the things I noticed you've got in here on a number of items is you need council to decide the priority.
Yes.
When do we do that? We've got a strategic plan, but we haven't assigned a priority to anything. We're, why not?
The first thing was to put it on here as a priority, that we have it on this strategic plan.
But, but now there's, I got nine items, can't do all nine at once.
You're right.
Which ones do we want to see done first, and which ones can wait a little bit?
I think, um, it's an excellent discussion that needs to be had, and maybe, um, as we approach our budget discussion, because that will tell us which things do we want to actually dedicate funding to in the near term versus in the long term.
But before you start doing the budget, wouldn't it be nice to know which items should be prioritized in the budget, rather than putting a budget together, coming to us and saying, here's our budget, it's like, well, no, we want to do this one instead of that one? Then you got to go back and do the whole budget over.
Mm-hmm.
It'd be nice to give the direction upfront before the work starts.
Sounds good.
Is there a cost associated with any of these items?
Yes, so on the spreadsheet, um, we have an estimated cost, and, um, what I don't have is the total cost for the objective, but typically, there is one line, uh, one line item that is, you know, drafted more than, than the other. So for instance, the parking lot, we just have no idea, are we purchasing a parking lot, are we building a parking lot, are we renting portion of an existing parking lot?
That's what, that's what I was, I was trying to figure out was, we're talking about, some of these things are talking, we're talking about parking, we're talking about extending river walks, we're talking about fixing some of the streetscape plans. Do we, do we know how much these things cost, do we have an idea of what we're going to build, what we're going to make it? And then like, we're talking about some of the streetscape things cost less than some of the bigger capital projects we want to do. Is there, is there going to be like, in my past, uh, former field, when I used to have a job, was, um, we used to have a construction schedule.
Right.
Do we know this year we're going to complete this, and this year we're going to complete this, and every year we knock off something as we go down the line?
Yeah, we don't have that specific of a plan, so we can definitely work on that.
That, I guess that'll be part of our discussions, when we talk about getting things done over the years, and thinking about the next five years, every five, every year, and then thinking every five years, something gets done, and then every ten years, something gets done. That's kind of to help prioritize what we need to do and assign monetary value to that to help us with our budget as well.
Great. Thank you very much.
Three minutes, Gary.
I'm a realist, I've been doing this since the early nineties, it's nine o'clock, and I'm up here to talk about infrastructure with sixty slides, so that is not a good math combination.
You say sixty?
As I said, that is not a good math combination, so, let's, let's approach it this way.
Ish.
You all have had this on the OneDrive, you have all these documents, you have all the spreadsheets, you have all the supporting information, the backup reports. I will plan to go through tonight in a fairly brisk manner, at a fairly high level. And if I touch on something that you guys want to touch on in specific, we can certainly dive in. Um, but the plan always has been for me to come back another time before the start of budget, uh, to kind of put a bow on it. So, this isn't the last opportunity, um, with that, I guess I'll dive in, and we'll, we'll kind of see how much progress we can make tonight. Oops, I'm not going to use the mouse.
That was really fast.
There we go, I'll use the keyboard instead. Um, on the sixteenth, I did give you as part of the media report, kind of this preview of these upcoming discussions, which we're having then tonight, and as I just said, in a few weeks' time, we'll come back for a quote-unquote "final discussion" before the start of the start of the twenty twenty budget meetings. Part of our analysis, part of, and I, I just take a few minutes on these slides, because there was a lot of time put in by the people in my department to try and develop all the spreadsheets that you guys have, uh, looking at twenty-year capital projections, um, reviewing capital expenditures from the prior ten-year period, and then kind of summarizing those all, um, and also then obviously including, um, bond and loan obligations, because those are things that we've either bonded for and are currently constructed, or we've bonded for and have constructed in the past. Um, this is a good example of a slide I can go through fairly quickly, this talks about, um, past expenditures and how much we have been spending over the last ten years, and over that time, uh, the city did implement a gas tax that wasn't always in place. Uh, we've also received TIF monies, uh, pointing to the streetscapes, those were really primarily funded out of TIF, for the most part. And we, we've received state and federal grants, some of those state and federal grants are still pending for large projects like Main Street and Prairie Street, but some of those we also received for, um, downtown, uh, Wilson Street, the traffic signals. We were able to do quite a few bit of, of projects over the last ten years with all those different funding sources. Uh, in twenty eleven, we did do a citywide roadway, uh, evaluation, that was done by a third-party outside company, and you'll ask yourself, why did it take four years to come up with the summary analysis? Um, those of you who are around know that we went through those four years, kind of transitioning out the engineering department. Um, so when engineering finally got to public works in twenty fifteen is when we came up with the uh, final analysis, and Rahad actually presented that to you, uh, very shortly into his time period here at the city. With a recommendation for two-point-six million, uh, funding annual, um, basically to get the streets and keep the streets in an average level condition. No qualified civil engineer would give a presentation without having this curve in there, which says basically that if you wait and you kick the can and you continue to kick the can, eventually you're over that sixty-dollar range to reconstruct, as opposed to being in the twenty or ten or five-dollar range to do things like crack fill and resurfacing. So, in the long run, you are better off spending lots of money on crack fill and surface treatments, as opposed to waiting for your streets to fall apart and having to reconstruct them. Um, I went through a lot of this already. The one important thing here is we got a grant from the state, which really wasn't a grant, um, but it was basically passed through funds, and that caused us to have to accelerate our general fund expenditures, and we're now at the end of that, so we're now kind of facing the prospect of not having general fund, um, you know, or, or, or we're going to have to take that into account, because we've, we've really kind of already spent the general fund monies for several years to come.
Gary, excuse me, can you, the chart before?
Yeah, this isn't the best one, but go ahead.
No matter what you do, do you have to rebuild the street after twenty to twenty-five years?
No, after twenty or twenty-five years, you should be able to resurface the street. It's when you let cul-de-sacs go, like, we have some cul-de-sacs that haven't been touched for thirty years. When you do that, then suddenly you, you've gotten beyond the resurfacing stage, and you don't have a choice anymore, but you're going to reconstruction. And if your roads get to that point, then you don't even touch them, just let them fall apart, let them get bad, because you're, you, you're putting, you're wasting money at that point doing any sort of preventative maintenance on them.
So how long could a road last if you kept up with regular resurfacing?
If you kept up with regular resurfacing and preventative maintenance, you can keep cycling the road, I mean, every ten years, you, you, you do it, and you, you bump it back up on the curve, and then it slowly goes back down, that's like I said, this isn't the best curve, because there's lots of different variations, but picture the slope going down, and after ten years, you resurface, so it goes straight up vertically, and it starts back down again, then it goes straight up vertically, then it starts back down again. You can keep a road, you know, for decades and decades if you preventively maintain, maintain it. Um, if you don't touch it, cul-de-sacs will last a long time, because they're not getting beat up by traffic and trucks, they're only getting beat up by the sun, it's the degradation from the sun that really tears them up. Um, if you didn't touch Wilson Street for the last thirty years, we would have had nothing but a, a minefield out there, because the trucks would have eventually just torn it up. Um, so there is, there was, there is this funding gap, uh, going years into the future. Uh, we are not, as the mayor has said, we're not counting on, uh, federal and state grant funds. And, um, that's kind of a recurring story throughout this presentation. We do have a gap, again, these numbers, both Peggy and I have gone through them, and there, I'll stress the words "approximate," this isn't an exact science, but I think it's important for council to know that, and as someone said previously earlier this evening, uh, there was never a lack of need for infrastructure spending. And the more, another major theme tonight is, the more you say, we don't want to raise revenues, we'll put that off for another year, um, you know, those things are just going to have to wait. Surprisingly enough, construction costs don't go down, they constantly go up. And so when you continue to defer, it continues to cost more money. So these are, these are, these are meant to show you that we have the need for additional funding, that shouldn't be a surprise to you. Um, and that's kind of consistent throughout this, this presentation. And again, you guys can jump into the details on these slides. Uh, we are recommending, because it'll be ten years, to have a, a company come in and do a new pavement condition analysis in twenty twenty-one. And we'll have to then kind of reset and, uh, relook at the funding to, again, keep the roads in average condition. Um, we are looking for a transition plan for funding, uh, to, um, I want to touch on the grant opportunities there in the middle, and we've talked about those a couple times tonight. Again, the mayor probably can attest to the fact that there were a bunch of federal grants that had been sitting out there with monies not being spent. And that was turned into a real issue, and so there is this trend on the federal side and the state side, where they're no longer going to fund Phase One reports, they're going to make the locals fund the Phase One reports. So, if we want to get a grant for something like, you know, I don't remember what we talked about tonight, we're going to have to invest the six figures plus in order to get a Phase One report done, just to get ourselves on the waiting list for a potential grant. So, that's kind of where it's, the trend is heading, there's, they're really not going to give you grants anymore when you don't even have a project, you know, in hand. Um, so that, that's something to keep in mind. Uh, we have been working with Anthony and, and administration to look at the Grant Finder tool, um, for different funding sources. Um, we are recommending to continue dedicating the full amount of the state MFT, which is the motor fuel tax that comes to us from the state, as well as our local gasoline tax. And then to incrementally increase the general fund transfer, again, keeping into account that we've already forced, in the forward, spent some of that, um, so we got to keep, keep that in mind as we go forward. And then, things like the downtown streetscape projects and the second bridge, um, aren't even included in, in, in what we just talked about, those are things that are, that are separate, and that if council wants those projects, you know, you're, we're going to have to define and, uh, identify funding sources for those things, to move those things forward. Uh, I'll put the road diet on there. Um, we do have anticipated to include in the twenty twenty budget, the traffic studies. Traffic study for the road diet is going to be, uh, comprehensive and, um, large in scope, and will be expensive, and before we dive into that, um, we, we're going to include that as the twenty twenty budget. But we have already reached out to IDOT, and I believe Laura's reached out to IDOT, we want to kind of get the dialogue started with IDOT. Uh, we have five months till this year to try and get that dialogue up and going, to see where they are in their thought process, uh, before we were to invest six figures plus in a traffic study, uh, only to turn it into them and then just have them, you know, lay the match under it, we don't want that to happen. So, we want to try and get that dialogue going from the, from the beginning. Um, keep reaching for the mouse. Put that down there, that'll solve their problem. Um, another options for the streetscape improvements, dare I say that developers contribute to streetscape improvements. Um, that is something that's happening with the One Washington Place, it's part of a redevelopment, and it is part of a TIF. But that developer, part of that total financial package is the developer making contributions for streetscape improvements. I think if there's an expectation for the city to fund a hundred percent of all the streetscape improvements, that they probably won't happen, or won't happen for a very long time. Um, other options are to identify, you know, a quad- Um, other options are to identify, you know, a quadrant of town. And people say, we want our streets improved. Well, good, let's establish a special service area. And those people who vote, they would be voters to say, I want my streets improved with streetscape and I'm willing to pay an extra, you know, X dollars on my property tax in order to contribute, you know, 20% towards the project and the city tosses in the other 80% towards the project. Special service areas are an option. Um, and then again, I've already talked about IDOT with the, with the need for engineering and local match funds. But there are, there are creative ideas for getting funding for some of these. I just don't know that everyone can rely on us to be the only deep pocket that contributes.
You know, Gary, the, they built those large buildings, apartment buildings in Oak Park. And they have streetscapes in front of those buildings, blue stone sidewalks. And the buildings contributed, developer of those buildings had to contribute a lot to those streetscape. So that is an idea that is just not here. It's, it is everywhere.
Uh, we don't need to jump too much into the bridge stuff. Uh, some of you already recognize that we did do, uh, Rahad and engineering. Uh, and again, I'll spend some time, just a few seconds on this because I want to acknowledge their efforts. And that they did do, uh, you have the backup data, travel time studies, uh, through town. Um, and there was a number, number of occasions on different dates and different times, and they did find the worst case, um, measure to be seven minutes and 50 seconds, so eight minutes for eastbound traffic right at that school letting out time. Um, and this was from, these studies were done from Van Nordwick to Redant. So car traveling east or west between those streets. Um, you guys talked about this earlier. Uh, you guys talked about that earlier. And before I hop off of streets, because that's really what you guys have talked about tonight. Signal timing in the downtown, we already talked about that with IDOT earlier this year. Aldman O'Brien was correct in that about five or six years ago, we did it. And IDOT reviews that on a regular schedule and we're about three years out. So the city could hire a consultant and we could pay money right now to that consultant to have them look at the signal timing. Um, that's probably in the orders of tens of thousands of dollars to have them come in and do the accounts and, and time the signals. Or we can wait, and our thought process earlier in this year was, One Washington Place is gonna come and go under construction. That's gonna change the equation anyways. So why not wait for all that to shake out and then let the state come in and we get it for free in a couple of years? That was our thought process. But again, that can be a 2020 budget item if we want to move forward immediately. Um, or if something happens, you know, to change the whole equation. And that was the last note that I had from the discussions. Um, sidewalks. Uh, we have been doing some removals and replacements, uh, back with the economic recession. Council decided to stop new construction. And then this year, obviously now we have a hundred thousand dollars in there for new construction. That's the first time in many years. We've told you, and that's in the budget, that that basically equates to about a hundred-year plan to construct sidewalk in town. Uh, but it's better than zero. And, um, so we, we are, we need to continue spending money on, on, on onesie twosies for removal and replacement and trip hazards. Laura already talked about the connection to, uh, Geneva. Um, stairs, construction of the pedestrian connection at the east bank of the Peace Bridge. I know that's been talked about several times. I again, am advocating for that to occur as part of a development over there. Let the developer pay for it. Let the developer include it in his planning efforts so that it makes sense with whatever is developed there. Uh, the wastewater treatment facility, if you recall, we did invest in funds, uh, for trotter engineering to prepare an application. So that is ready and that's something we will resubmit again when the next cycle comes around for funding. Um, right now sidewalk is currently supported only by the general fund. Uh, we do have used, I believe we have, that may not be 100% correct, because I think we have used some MFT funds for some sidewalk projects. Um, but that's basically the funding sources. We mentioned this earlier. CMAC is a potential funding source for sidewalk projects. Safe House to School program has been dead for a number of years, and I now hear rumblings that it's coming back. And so the Safe House to School program might be an option to construct new sidewalks. As the name implies, that's only for walks that are directly related to travel of children to schools. We have those and we have the need for some of those, so we might be able to get some of that funding. We will certainly keep an eye on that and pursue that. Um, basically a couple of recommendations. One is for keeping a static level of funding, um, in the 2020 budget of 200 and 250,000. So that includes about 100,000 for new sidewalks, about 100 and 150 for sidewalk repairs. That's basically consistent with what we have in this year's budget. I don't think that's such a bad plan. At least it continues to do something. And if we want to look at these other projects, uh, as I just said a little earlier, we're gonna need engineering on the front end, uh, before they even consider giving, giving us grant funds. So we'd have to probably include another 100, 150 in the budget, um, to support engineering efforts, um, if we want to seek grant funding for some of these larger scale projects. Stormwater, um, we've made a lot of progress on this since, since I first started here. Um, we did have, in the last 10 years, we paid off bonds from the 96th flood event. By many of you lived here back then, you remember how significant that was. Um, we started doing some small-scale annual programs in 2012, and that was right around the same time we started talking about a stormwater utility. Um, we did explore that concept of a utility and council eventually decided to forego the establishment of a utility and fund via the general fund and a property tax increase instead. We'll come back to that in a second. Um, council has authorized increase in general fund transfers over the past few years. In other words, more support from the general fund, more support from property taxes in support of stormwater projects. Um, right around the time we had just finished the stormwater utility study was the June 15th storm of 2015. And, uh, so literally we got the study done. We made a presentation of that study one week earlier and one week later the storm hit. And so you all know that we identified, uh, Ward 1 and Area 3 as a city. We identified that as the top priorities and we've been working on those, uh, for the past several years now. Um, we are in the final stages, the final phases of those projects, which will continue into next year. But we're basically have identified, um, we basically have completed the major components of those projects. Additional projects that resulted from that 2015 storm event, we did identify, but they have never been funded. Um, and those still aren't funded. They're just, they're projects that we know that are sitting out there, um, but have no definitive funding for moving forward. Uh, we did issue a bond in 2017 to fund the Ward 1 and Area 3 improvements. And obviously the city will pay on that bond for the next 20 years. That is money the city is going to contribute towards stormwater for the next 20 years. Uh, we made a decision to fund it all upfront so that we could actually build. Um, and then the city has, shouldn't be viewed, the city should be viewed as continuing to fund stormwater for the next 20 years because you're paying off that bond. Things that aren't included, um, in this analysis that we did, that's the Fox River Master Plan, uh, dam depot pond, riverbank stabilization. Uh, none of those things were even contemplated, well, not that they weren't contemplated, but they certainly weren't, uh, talked about in any sort of detail in the 2015 stormwater utility analysis. Um, nor were the sewer separations in that analysis. Uh, as I said, uh, there's plant projects, Mahoney Creek's a good one that's sitting out there since 2015. Um, I'd love to do the Mahoney Creek project on Fermilab. I think that project could have great impact. Uh, but we just don't have money for it. Um, we are anticipating to, to, um, issue, potentially issue more bonds, uh, for the Main Street. That's what our plan was for 2019. Then the project got shifted, so we'll have to reevaluate and replan for 2020. But that's probably what, what we'll end up doing. Um, and then if strategic initiative or other projects move forward, uh, we're gonna need more funding sources.
Gary, real quick, for, with the, the Fermi issue, is there a possibility of splitting costs on that?
Um, I don't know who else would split with us on that one.
Given that it's coming off Fermi property?
By law, they're allowed to, to discharge.
I, 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 I get it, but I mean, given, given the fact that that's happening, is that a discussion that we can at least have with them?
Uh, we can always have that discussion with them. I'm just, I'm just telling you that they're, they're by law allowed to do what they're doing.
I get it. I get it, but they're also good neighbors.
Yeah, they are. And they gave us, um, their contribution, um, putting on Fermilab's hat, I'm gonna say their contribution was the fact that they've already given us an easement. We already have a stormwater basin out there. They've even talked to us about allowing us to have more property for a greater easement and to allow us to construct a larger basin out there. Their, their staff people at least are on board with that. Um, so I think they're looking at a fee or a in-kind type contribution.
Sure. They have been working with us with those easements.
Oh, yes. Yeah, they've been very cooperative. Um, perhaps we want to look at some sort of, uh, grant consultant. This kind of goes along the discussions we have with the gentleman from St. Charles, um, to look at creative funding options. He indicated to us that some of these funding options aren't available to government agencies, but they are available to nonprofits. So potentially creation of a nonprofit that, that could, you know, be a river, river re, revitalization organization, a 501(c)(3) that could then receive, um, funding from endowments. Um, you know, he, he named, I can't remember which famous family or which, which family he named. But one of these families is, is environmentally sensitive and they want to give money to, 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 you know, groups to do environmental projects. Uh, they're not interested in giving money to government agencies, but they're interested in giving money to, to good groups. I can't remember what, who it was, but, um, but it's out there. So.
So one of us can start a, um, those.
Well, as Laura indicated earlier.
It's usually a coalition of different groups that, that exists, like, uh, friends of the, the Fox River and the Fox River Coalition and, um, you know, band together and form a 401(c), uh, 501(c)(3), like.
Yeah, that's kind of the idea, this regional, this regional approach.
Mm-hmm. We'll get people on board.
There are rich people wanting to give us money.
That's.
Hopefully. Um, this is why I said we'll come back to the stormwater utility. I got asked about this by a couple of people. Right now, that would be purely at a policy level. We are getting funding through the property tax. So it's not as much of a funding issue as it is a policy issue, because right now we're getting money from the property tax from those people who pay property taxes. There are many properties in town who don't pay property taxes. So that's a policy decision in and of itself. Do you want to go after those people who don't pay property taxes? And if you had a stormwater utility, you'd kind of reallocate how the funding comes in. Someone like an industrial park or a large shopping development on Aranda Road that has huge rooftops and huge parking lots, they pay a proportionally higher share because they have a proportionally higher impact on the stormwater system than does somebody with a one-acre lot and a single-family house. So those are kind of policy decisions. And at the time, council did not want to, um, council didn't want to enact on those policy decisions. They didn't, they felt the most equitable approach was the stormwater utility, um, sorry, property tax. Um, the other component to all of that is the management of a utility. It would take, you know, staff to manage a utility and to decide who pays what and make sure that they pay and who gets credits for what. That all takes time. And a property tax is just a straight levy and really takes no time on a staff at all. So anyways, my recommendation is, do we want to have a re, re, a streamlined reconsideration of that concept? And if we do, probably sometime next year, we can tackle that. That is purely a policy discussion, uh, that council would have to have. Um, and again, recommendation for reconsideration of the tax levy, uh, if we're gonna address some of these other strategic initiative proj, projects that are gonna need funding. Uh, government center and the food pantry. Um, as you know, we just did the window replacements. We'll be paying on that bond through 2036, but that's a project that desperately needed to get done. Um, we are projecting the next 20 years of expenditures, when averaged, to be consistent with the prior 10 years. But as you might imagine, you, you can't have a contractor build a project this year and tell him that you will give him 18 years of equal payments. It doesn't work that way. You need, you know, need funds in order to fund a large project. So Area 3 and Ward 1, we bonded in order to have those funds to pay that contractor. Um, we're recommending and will be recommending as part of the 2020 budget to do some of those large-scale projects we've been talking about. And that's gonna require, um, you know, some, some sort of funding mechanism to do that. Um, building security improvements and the need to balance public access versus safety. We've talked with you a couple of times this year about that. Certainly the incident in Aurora earlier this year, um, a workplace incident brought that all back to life again. Um, this isn't the 1990s anymore. And when the last time when this building was, was remodeled, it was remodeled for the time in which it was remodeled and it was, has been functional for, you know, 25 years now. Um, things are a little different now in 2019 and we have to think about different things. Um, as I said there on the bottom, uh, the more we defer and, and we continue to backlog things into the future, ultimately it just is gonna continue to result in, in higher costs. Uh, the building remodeling, um, work was first recommended back in 2016. Uh, we'll keep going. Public Works, that building was built as a utilitarian building back in the late 1980s. A general steel building, nothing too fancy about it, but it gets the job done and is a good facility for us. Um, the issue on that building right now is that original metal roof on both the main garage and the warehouse. They're reaching the end of their lives. Uh, we, we have interesting leaks once in a while out there where we have to bring in roofing contractors, uh, to get them fixed. Um, we can't keep patching that roof indefinitely. We, we are getting to the point where those, those roofs have to get replaced. So those are gonna be big expenditures in the next couple of years. We also need to look at, um, additional storage space out there. Or kind of always, we have been bursting at the seams for many years now. So we just need to, to look at some improvements to our public works, uh, facility. Um, and again, it's been a really frugal and, uh, well-spent money from the 1980s that we're still getting our use out of. So I think that that's, that's a good thing. Uh, fire stations, of course, were, uh, really brand, all brand new and, and amazing facilities. Um, those were just constructed. Those are still considered, you know, to be new facilities. Uh, that being said, they're 10-plus years old now and they're gonna start to, um, you know, the HVAC systems and, and the flooring and, uh, you know, the things that wear out are gonna start to wear out. So we, we can't stick our head in the sand and pretend like we never have to spend any money on those. Eventually, we're gonna have to increase, um, funding, um, you know, for those. So. Keep going through that. Actually, I tried taking that one out. So I'll go in tomorrow. The last bullet point there needed to come out because then I added these two. So I'll fix that. Our fleet, this one and then the rest of these should go quick. We've been since 2009 following a comprehensive fleet replacement plan. That was done during the Financial Sustainability Project, where we looked at our life cycles for all of our vehicles as well as rightsizing the vehicles. In recent years, we've looked at green aspects of the vehicles. Um, I would recommend that we keep following that plan. That plan is reviewed on an annual basis. And we do make, uh, we do make, um, revisions to that plan as time goes on. We just brought one to you recently when we talked about the bucket truck. We basically slid everything in order to fit the bucket truck in, in order to, to keep, um, you know, comprehensive plan in place and consistent funding levels. Um, that's really our goal and that is to, to provide a consistent year-to-year expenditure level. There's nothing really going on with wastewater and I say that tongue-in-cheek because obviously there's a ton going on down there. Um, we just finished the 2019, um, first phase of multi-year phase of improvements. Um, we're anticipating those improvements to go through around 2027. And I know it sounds strange, but we have to think about the fact that if the first improvements were done here now in 2017, 18, and into 19 unfortunately, 20 years from now, so in 2037, we gotta, we're gonna be looking at another round of improvements again. That's just how wastewater treatment plants are. Uh, when you put very, um, tough materials that you're processing, I'll, I'll use that phrase, they, they don't last forever, the equipment and the machines and the pumps. So every 20 years, you gotta look at replacing them. That was, that 20-year projection's not included in what you have, but I just threw it out there. Um, we do, it did have a rate increase in 2019. We'll probably have another rate increase in 2020 and it'll probably end in future years. That's just gonna be a reality. Uh, we do have to cover the, the debt service and the IEPA loans. And, um, I will tell you that my Fox Metro bill in the past five years has more than doubled and almost is now approaching tripling. That is a fact of phosphorus removal and the IEPA requirements, um, up and down the Fox River. Water is in the middle of, or was in the middle of back then, um, the main cross-town water main and storage towers and treatment facility improvements. Those were all done, which is why we have bonds, um, that the city was paying off on. Um, we are now, the original portions of the treatment plant are approaching 30 years old and those are nearing the end of service life. And we're out for loans on those to see if we can get loans to do improvements to our treatment plant, um, to address those things that are 30 years old and, and ending life as well as worker safety and regulatory issues out there. Um, looking at potentially, again, bonds or loans, um, in order to support average spend, spending through 2038, so through the next, you know, 10, 10. spending through twenty thirty eight, so through the next, you know, ten, ten plus years. Um, we are, we did do a rate increase and we're anticipating again additional rate increases in the coming in, coming years. Electric. Um, prior to this period, we had just finished the one thirty eight projects and the thirty four KB projects. Good news here is that purchase power for cost from NIPA have decreased and they've continued to decrease for several years now and that's really due to the positive um performance that Prairie State has had. Um, bad news here is a second bullet point and that's the potential for state legislation that really could impact the long term purchase power cost for Batavia. We did have a rate increase in twenty fifteen and we haven't had a rate increase since then. Um, I would hope that people would understand that it's probably not sustainable to maintain twenty fifteen rates indefinitely. Um, we're going to review rates in twenty twenty. I'm I'm pretty confident um that we won't have to have a rate increase in twenty twenty, but we're getting to the point with our capital expenditures that we're going to need to have a rate increase to support the capital um reliability type improvements that we're making to the, to the system. So whether it happens in twenty twenty or twenty twenty one, we're, we're, we're getting to the point after five years, we're going to need a rate increase. Um, this is kind of what I told you at the beginning. Hopefully I went fairly quick. And with that, planned to return in a couple of weeks' time.
But I, I'd say, Gary, you know, thank you for that. And you know, I think, you know, you and and whoever else in the electric department has, have done a really fine job keeping the rates down considering our members, NIPA, which is members of Prairie State, we've never did meet that, that crossover point regardless of what ComEd is doing, you know, that we've managed to keep the rate, you've managed to keep the rates down, which is quite impressive, I thought, because we always thought they were going to be going through the roof.
We can't take too much credit for that internally. Um, really, that's NIPA and really that's the, that's the Prairie State project itself performing better.
Well, I, I look at those things you send out every month and they do, uh, they are doing well.
They are, they are doing well down there. Um, we're doing our best internally to try and make capital improvements, um, you know, to keep the system reliable.
Thank you.
Just real quick, on on that note, if anyone has not talked to State Revvia about, you know, about the importance of that legislation not going through, um, you need to, she needs to hear from you. So because, and even though she knows it, the more people that talk to her about it, it's important, it really is.
Staff has been invited to her workshop, so I will not be here on a Tuesday night cow. I think it's September tenth.
I think it's the tenth.
I think it's the tenth.
Yeah.
I won't be here this eve, that evening. I'll be in St. Charles attending her workshop. Um, she has invited representatives from Batavia, Geneva and St. Charles to attend that workshop um from the staff level, so.
Just really quickly, Gary, thank you for putting that together. It's a lot of really good information and all the supporting documents were, were very helpful. Um, I guess as we discuss things like streetscape, I think is probably one of them. I agree that developers should, you know, help to contribute to that, but I think we should look at some tactical things that we can do here and there that we can't necessarily rely on any developer coming in anytime soon because it's already an established area. But like I had mentioned a few weeks ago, I was like, we can put up trees, we can do certain things, there's signage, which I know Griffin is working on some of the signage things with Main Street, but um other Batavia entryway type signage. I mean, there's a bunch of, I think, little things we can do rather than saying, oh, we have the streets, streetscape design for, for Batavia Avenue and that's going to cost millions of dollars. But there's things we can do for fifty thousand or a hundred thousand or whatever and just start doing it. Kind of like when you start landscaping in your yard, it's like, okay, I'm not going to buy twenty trees for my yard this year, I'm going to buy two and over the next ten years I'll have twenty.
So that's a good opportunity for the community to chime in and say, our Main Street organization, downtown business owners to say, wouldn't it be nice to do this project? That's a forty thousand or a twenty thousand dollar project. Um, some of those things, again, it would be, it'd be nice to have that community input on so that you guys could take that and prioritize and say, yeah, I'll spend twenty thousand dollars on this, but we're not going to spend it here, even though that's a great project, we're not going to spend it here because we know of something else that's going to happen that'll eventually take care of that. So that's, that, that I would throw out to the community to say, you know, uh, if it's just as generic as let's do something like trees or signs, then then let's get some input and see what people would want.
I just want to say, I know that uh the incredible amount of information that you started with and to uh for each one of the department heads to organize that information into, and then the presentation that you've put together here to make it all in one place, that was really a hard, hard job and I appreciate the work you did to distill it like that.
Thank you.
Yes, I would reiterate that and um, looking at the roadways and looking at your ten year average annual expenditures, it's been two point three million and then projects funded from recurring revenues, one point four. Is that? We've been funding one point four million an- annually, but we have two point three million that we should be spending or what is the?
We'll run through that real quick.
That two point three million annually.
We spent it.
Because of other funding sources.
Gotcha, okay. Gotcha.
There you go.
Um, and would you say we are fully covering all of the roadway expenses that we have? Are we doing a hundred percent of the projects that?
That we need? No, there, there is this gap and that's the, that's the, that's what we talked about. So now there are potential funding, funding sources for that gap. We have a reserve right now in the M F T fund that we can slowly chip away at in order to to close in on that gap. And again, in future years, um, we can look at.
There's the gap.
A larger um transfer from the general fund. Um, again, we talk about it almost annually. We have to look at our, our local gasoline tax. Um, I do not know, Peggy will know right off the top of her head whether we're maxed out on that or not. I know there is a max that we can have, but I'm not sure if we're there yet. Um, you know, one more penny on that equates to several hundred thousand dollars, so.
But, but eventually it's going to have to be a transfer from the general fund. I mean.
That's the plan.
Yeah.
The twenty nineteen budget and the projection in the bag, this year we transferred three hundred and fifty thousand, so ramping that up.
Yeah. Which would, which would, which would cover that?
Covers that gap.
Cover the gap.
It does, exactly.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think that's, that sounds like a fair plan to me as opposed to do, trying to bite it all off at once just to.
All in one year.
Phase it up.
Yeah, we're recommending this to transition plan. And again, in twenty twenty one, we'll look to redo the system update and kind of reshuffle the math and.
Marty? With all of these, obviously with the gap, we cannot just go ahead and bring everything up to closing that gap today. It's, it would be just impossible to financially. But as we're talking about all these with raising rates and raising property taxes and raising, 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 is there ever a point that we do any financial analysis as to whether or not the community can actually afford it? Can the people that are here that are paying for these things actually start making decisions between, I can't eat now because I've got a fund? Do we ever have any data points for that that kind of start weighing that saying? Because Abby brought up a great point to me with a lot of the communities that the mayor was talking about that are failing. Is it because they overextended themselves and doing a lot of projects and a lot of things that because they had to do them because you have to do them and it's easy to say we want to do these things because we have to. But in our own personal lives, if we can't afford to do them, you start going into more debt and then your tax base starts eroding and then you become like all of those other communities that are having problems. Where is that guidance for us that we need to raise the rates, but here's the impact on the community rather than anecdotal evidence of people on Facebook or coming up, I just can't afford it? At what point is the, I can't afford it because I don't like paying taxes or I seriously can't afford it and I'm leaving?
So having a financial analyst would be great.
Yeah. Well, there's, I think there are, I think we collect tons of data points. Are people, when we implement for bills, are we seeing a lot of more slow pays in um, in their electric bills? A lot of slow pays, is that increasing? Are we seeing a lot more code enforcement violations for houses that are abandoned? There are a lot of social things that you can start doing to start seeing. Are, what's the uh, what's the housing taking um going on the market? How many people are putting their houses up for sale? How many people are moving away? All of those factors, we collect a lot of data that is relevant to these things. And we, you can't make specific.
But we don't know if they're upgrading their home or downgrading their home to determine whether they're doing better and moving into a larger home or if they're selling it.
I think it's, there's a really key point to your question. Unless you want to tear out roads in front of people's houses, the roads exist.
Right.
And the water mains exist and the sewers exist. And as a, as a fiscally responsible community, we have to pay to maintain and rebuild those things, period. Whether people can afford it or not, the city made the community, or city made the decision to build those things at one point in time. The one, there's a huge thing that we can control and that is not to build anything new. Uh, don't be like the nineteen fifties with the expansion of the expressway system, which was a wonderful thing all the way until the point where you jump fifty years later and America didn't have money to repair all the bridges that we have. Because we don't have money to repair all of our bridges. We had uh the Para Prairie Parkway or whatever the heck that was that was proposed ten years ago out there, which was going to be yet another, you know, ring of of urban expansion. Um, so to your point, you know, maybe we don't do new infrastructure as much as we'd love to have it if we can't afford it. Not only can we not afford to build it today, we probably can't afford to maintain it thirty years from now. The stuff though, I'll argue again, because you're paying me to do this, the stuff you you have to maintain is the stuff you already have.
Right.
Because you, you don't have a choice. People still expect the lights to come on and the water faucet to run and the sewers to to drain. Those things, those are going to increase in costs and you really can't avoid those.
And I'm not saying avoid them because as you've seen, at least in the past, since I've been on, we've increased all of the funding for those things.
Yeah, you guys.
We have, we have gone up and strategically said, we own it and we're going to pay for it because I believe the conversations have always been, we have a moral responsibility for what was put in here.
No doubt about it.
We have not shirked our responsibility on that. It's at a certain point, the realities of unfortunately this state are starting to create problems that will affect us, that we need to be aware of and how, I'm not saying that we don't raise taxes or we don't do this. I'm saying where is the conversation about when we're doing these things? What is the financial impact and the financial health to our community for doing those things?
Again, you have to establish service levels too. I mean, i- is is a service level of of average what you want? Are you, are you more comfortable with below average, you know, roadway conditions? Um, because if delaying, you know, saying we don't want to increase taxes and we say that multiple years in a row, that project still needs to be done, that resurfacing project or that water main project. And now you've just made that project happen four years later and and it's more expensive. And from a large perspective, you want to make your infrastructure last as long as you can. I'm not saying that. Um, but from that, from that like resurfacing perspective, if you let that road just keep going, pretty soon it goes beyond the stage where you can just resurface it. So there's smart investments that you can delay and there's not ones that are not very smart that you can delay.
Yeah, I want to, uh, like Marty said, the, the mayor's anecdotes about the cities going under made me super anxious and obviously I don't think that we are there yet, but um, and I don't advocate that we start to fall behind and I want to see all of these things funded. Um, and there were just those red flags that went off when I was sitting in the audience, I think last year during budget discussions, talking about new subdivisions and how they are net losers for the city. So in thinking about adding infrastructure and then, uh, we discuss this a lot in environmental science classes about how growth is not always good. Not all growth is good. Development is good, but growth is not good. So we've got miles and miles of roads being constructed over the next couple of years. But now we're adding to a system that's already not generating enough tax revenue to pay for itself. It's just something that we have to be super mindful of in the future and and looking at the way that we grow. Um, because I don't want to add to the gap.
No, One Washington Place is a great example.
Yes, yes.
One Washington Place provides the density and the property taxes to not only pay for itself, it's paying for, you know, surrounding improvements.
Yeah, and are there?
Single family home, new single family development is a break even proposition at best because we have to provide fire services and police services and brush collection and leaf collection and and road, street plowing and we provide a lot of services for not a lot of return on.
Right.
The square miles, not over a block.
What about like Prairie Commons? Would, would, would that be a more efficient?
Townhouses are much more efficient, exactly, because their density is much higher.
Are there examples out there that you've seen in cities where they have enacted policies to do smarter growth from a infrastructure? And are we following, are, are there recommendations you can make for how we approach it?
That may have been a discussion for the nineties. I mean, the cities, the cities kind of already all built out now. Cluster homes are are a good example of that, where they put all the infrastructure in one small area, built all the homes in one area and then left hundreds of acres of green space. And then over here, they built another cluster. That's an example of what you're talking about where they limit that infrastructure. Instead of running, you know, miles of water main down the street to serve, you, you clustered all the homes together. That was, that was definitely something that was along those lines.
And I think to continue that, I mean, it's an important discussion. I mean, One Washington Place, over and over and over again, the complaints that were out there were about, oh, I'm used to Batavia being this small town. And it isn't going to be, there's, not that there's a lot of tracts of land, but there are spaces out west where people could still develop and say they want to be part of Batavia or they would end up being part of Batavia. But the only way to keep this from getting worse is to maybe say no to those and say yes to more high rises, which that's what is going to make people say this isn't, that's not Batavia anymore. You know, Batavia is turning into um Glen Allen or Oak Brook or somewhere that has built a lot of, a lot of those high ri, or Oak Park is what I'm going to say.
The, the Land Meyer Farm is still, is in, is in discussions right now. Those are not, you know, huge lots with very low density. They're, they're much more of a dense, that, that's the type of development that cities often shy it away from, but really those are the types of developments that kind of, you know, at least break even and pay for themselves. Because you get a lot of taxpayers in a smaller density of area.
Yeah. You know, I, I was in Chicago all morning uh at the C map council of mayors, of which I'm the chairman. And I got to tell you, I'm, I, I go in there and I have a lot of questions asked to me by other cities about how Batavia is able to do things that they're seeing on paper. You know, one of the things that's amazing to many of the cities in the region is our property tax rate, which I think is about, I think it's about seventy three cents, isn't it? And, you know, you, you put that on the paper against a lot of, most, there's two hundred and eighty four cities and villages in the Chicago Land Region. Our tax rate in comparison to many others is down there at the lower end. I mean, we, and so they say, how are you able to do all that? You know, and then how do you get a ISO class one fire department? You know, how are you doing that with, you know, the money that you, you're collecting? So, you know, we are looked well, I would tell you, we share this with Geneva and St. Charles uh because we are the kind of the perceived to be the, the towns that are moving in the right direction and we don't have a lot of the, the baggage that, you know, Alderman just mentioned about the, you know, the towns that are starting to really have serious financial problems and those are really there and they really do have some bad, bad things facing them. But, you know, we're talking about raising some fees here and I'm not jumping up with joy and applauding it, but in the context of cities' expenses, we really remain one of the better ones in the region as far as how much we're charging people. The biggest nut we have on the tax bill is the school district. And I mean, our s- school district tax is pretty high in comparison to a lot of others, but people, you know, rave about the quality of the schools and that's one of the, if you were to ask people, what's the number one reason most people are moving to Batavia? It's the school district. So, I mean, they got to know that coming in, that they can look in and see what that tax bill is for that school district and they're seemingly willing to pay money, buy a nice house so they can have access to that school district. So, you know, in the context of things, I get asked, whether mayors, can I come out and drive around your town with you and you tell me about it? I don't know how many times I've done that in the last few years, uh, that people have come in here and said, gee, tell me about River Street or, you know, Laura and I were just had Western Springs in here, I've told you a few weeks ago, and they were very interested to see what we were doing here. So, I mean, we're kind of looked upon as a model example and I'm not trying to be bragging here, but that's the way it is. And I'm very proud of that fact that we have that. And, you know, we've got some towns that touch us that have tax rates of, city tax rates of over, well over two dollars. And we're at seventy. And we're at seventy-three cents. So, uh, you know, give the staff a lot of credit, we are doing some things the right way here, and, you know, I share, Alderman Callahan's concerned that we don't want to go crazy here and start raising the taxes and all the fees and everything else. But in the context, overall context of the world, we're still at a pretty, pretty low rate. Uh, so we'll see where it all flushes out, but at the moment, we're, we're one of the, I had somebody in there today to tell me, well, you're the mayor of one of the starships. And I said, well, I don't, I got a lot of problems out there. I don't need to be called a starship, but, you know, and they said, in the context of, whatever, what's happening in the region, and there's a lot of cities that are really afraid of where this finance thing is going at the state and federal level. Because it doesn't look like there's a lot of positive spin in it. And, uh, we were in there just today having quite a discussion. They've reorganized kind of the funding, of, of the federal money coming into the region. And they've redeveloped it into some different pots that we're kind of working our way through, but we, we have to share that money with the city of Chicago. And Chicago came in today, or came the other day and said they think we ought to rethink about it again. And of course, the immediate suspicion is, well, they didn't get as much as they wanted, so they want to refi, so we had a big meeting amongst all the suburban people this morning. It was unanimous that we're not agreeing to any refixing of the, of the fund anymore, at least for the moment, because, uh, everybody seemed to be not happy with, they didn't get as much as they wanted, but they thought it was done in a fair and equitable manner.
Anybody else have anything? Thank you, Gary.
Sure.
It's nice to see it all in one place.
This next item I can cover in two minutes or less. It has to do with the Carriage Crest Stormwater Recharge Basin, which some of you may not even know what that is, but it's on the northwest side of town. It's a detention basin that was built, um, back when those subdivisions were first developed. Dropped that three times tonight. And it's, um, it doesn't have an outlet. It actually was a basin that was built to be a recharge basin. Uh, we do have homes in the area that are experiencing actual inundation of their homes, actual flooding of their homes, that's kind of connected to this recharge basin. Uh, this is not a new problem. This is a problem that's been going on for years. Um, so one of the questions before council, and I, I don't have any resolution tonight, because I'm not asking for any formal action, but we went out to EEI. EEI is the, um, engineers that we use for our well work, for our underground well work, um, related to the water system. And, um, they've given us a proposal to come in and, uh, kind of give a grasp on the total scope of the situation by talking to the neighbors in the neighborhood, and then looking at developing, uh, basically a well, a well and pump system that would lower that groundwater, uh, within the basin, and mechanically, you know, pump it out into the storm sewer system that would then actually, is tributary to, um, um, tributary to the marsh and Brayburn Marsh and Mill Creek over there. So that's the natural course of water, um, that it would flow. So anyways, I, I'm, I'm just, this is, again, something that's not in the twenty nineteen budget. Their proposal is for about fifty thousand dollars. Uh, we can move forward now if you'd like. I can bring back a resolution for you, uh, or if you want to put this in the twenty twenty budget, we can do that. Um, I really brought it tonight because some of you are at least aware of, of the, of the nature of the issues out there, and the homes that are getting flooded, and, um, just wanted to bring it forward to, at least, if we move forward still this fall, or we wait till next twenty, next year, twenty twenty to look at it.
Anybody have any issues?
The problem is not going to go away.
Right.
Right, yeah.
It's been there for, well, long before I was mayor, that got built out there, and, um, I agree with Gary, it, it, it was not properly,
Mike Jeff.
It was not properly, uh, engineered, in my opinion. I'm no engineer, but just, as Gary indicated, the water just hangs loose there. Till eventually it evaporates or, or whatever have you, and, uh, it's supposed to be a park and a playground and everything else, but most of the time it's too wet for the kids to play in it, and, so, you know, it's, I would encourage us to probably go ahead and do this, because this is one of those that's not going to go away.
And that's the way I feel about it, is it was built by somebody else prior in the city, but we have to take responsibility for it.
So what do you propose?
I can come back to you with a formal resolution to, EEI is one of our, um, MSA, MSA develop, um, so we would do a task order that you guys have done approved, and we could get them going here in twenty nineteen, with looking to potentially do construction in the twenty twenty or like the latest twenty twenty-one years, again, depending on how it goes in the budget.
I'd be, I'd be good, I'd be approving something to bring it forward.
The reason why we're bringing this, and you guys may ask, I mean, I mentioned the, uh, the Mahoney Creek project earlier. Um, this project, again, just this summer, physical water in people's basements, I mean, physical water point, so this is actually a physical flooding issue.
Right. It's a quality of life issue for people there.
See, that's all I had on that one.
Let me give direction to Gary to bring that forward.
I can bring it forward as a resolution, and then you guys can vote on it. Yep.
Next up will be product, project status.
Have we talked about anything except projects tonight? Are there any remaining projects that you might have, uh, questions about?
Oh, I've got one.
Yes.
The, uh, Newsboy Alley.
Okay, so the Newsboy Alley, um, our understanding is that, um, once the arch was put in place on, uh, North River Street, now, I was not here, so perhaps those who are here at the time can, uh, fill me in on the details. Um, there was quite a bit of negative reaction from, um, the city, and therefore they decided to not install the Newsboy Alley arch because of the negative backlash from the arch that they installed. Is that?
I don't recall that. Do you recall that, Alan?
I don't remember it. I'd have to go back.
I recall, there was protests on, on River Street with the arch. There were, there were definitely protests. There was, you know, the, the typical cast of characters, it, I believe the Dinwiddies were out there, and, and the other lady, and they were, you know, they were opposed to it. And now that arch is, is an iconic symbol, you know, and, and this is River Street, so. But that was not part of any protest because it was not put up. I mean, I think it was had more to do possibly with, with trash. But it was approved, and so it was voted on and approved, so I'd just like to see it come to fruition to finish what we've started on River Street.
There were, um, I have found drawings of it, so I could submit that to.
We have the, we, we have the two foundations in the ground. So I, I think we should just finish it.
What I remember about that is, I agree with what you just said. Uh, the discussion was, is that if we put the arch up there, when we first put the arch up on River Street, the pundits right away were screaming, well, you won't be able to get the fire department ladder truck to come down there and drive underneath that. So we brought the fire department ladder truck down there, and of course, we had pre-measured it. It goes, and goes under there probably five times a month as it is, and it's four feet or three feet away from it, so it doesn't do that. There was a little bit of concern about, because of the time, the size of the buildings in that alley, how easy it was going to be for that ladder truck to get down there. And this was shortly, within a few years, certainly memory of those on the council at the time, we had had a real bad fire down there where the building, where now the thin line tattoo is. That was another whole building in eighty-nine that burned down, and three, three storefronts burned there in eighty-nine, one night in February. And it had quite a bad fire. We had four ladder trucks flowing on that baby before it was over with. And we had ours down there and trying to get it in there, and we could get it in there at the time because there wasn't any arch there. And so the problem became, if you drove the truck down there, but maybe you only didn't, you know, so far, but then you tried to raise the ladder, if that arch was there, you potentially got, had a problem with that, too. So it was stuff like that, and I think that was kind of the, the dissuading conversation that kind of said, well, let's sit on this for a while, and it kind of fell off the side of the table then, as far as anybody think about it. You and I were on the council when that all was discussed, and I, it was a committee meeting where we talked about that ladder truck and all that good stuff. The fire we'd had there, and if, if the arch had been there, it could have been a problem for that. That's what it was.
We can talk with the fire chief, but I'd, I'd like to get it back on the table.
Yeah, I don't know if that alley, if there would be even any way to get the truck in there.
Yeah.
They got it in there with the night of the fire, but it was, it was tight. I mean, I tell you, it was.
Today, our, our issue is like the Vector truck trying to get down there to do the lift station.
Okay.
Garbage truck trying to get in there. So whatever design, if it's a design that, that works for those large vehicles, then we can do that.
We can do that. Absolutely. We, I mean, you got to be accommodating.
Part of the discussion is to make sure the current equipment that we have can get in there. If we're going to do it for the design that was there, it still has to meet what equipment we have today. Because I know our ladder truck is bigger, and I know that most of the other equipment we have is bigger.
We have a new Vector truck since that was first.
Right.
The bigger truck now, too.
I think that's important considerations. If we do it, we have to do it so that it's accessible. But I have no problem getting it done, because we said we were going to do that. Okay, any other?
Nope.
Project updates? Okay, other? Marty?
Yeah, so just, um, kind of along the theme of the projects for forty, fifty-year, twenty-year, ten-year, five-year plans. Um, as part of community development, I'm going to have Abby, because she's done a ton of work, um, on the different committees that she's had, and she brings a wealth of information. And I know Keenan is wanting to, and Nick, just from being people that are around town during the day, a lot of the, like Keenan had said, you know, what's our plan for prioritizing some of these things? And we rely on staff for a lot of these big things. But we also pass a lot of things and set visions, and a lot of small little things get lost. So, um, Abby's going to kind of gracefully put some of that all together, and some of the low-hanging fruit punch list items, um, things that don't cost a lot of money, or if it does, if it does cost some money, bring it back to council and committee where this is where we're going to, um, that's our role, is to kind of move the big things together, but also pay attention to the small things. Um, so if you're interested, contact, um, Abby or Nick, and we can only meet, obviously, four at a time. Um, but if people will meet together, talk about the things in the downtown improvement plan, or things that we want to put on, um, the agenda for community development. Let me know, and we'll keep the momentum going. And Abby, I know, will bring in several of the stakeholders in town, uh, have conversations with them. Is there anything else you wanted to kind of go through with that?
No, that's pretty much it.
Okay. I know she's, Abby has a list, so watch out, Batavia.
I don't remember it at some point. Anybody else? Okay.
Some vote.
Second. Motion to adjourn, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We ran out way underneath the record last.
Yay.
Four hours, thirty-three minutes, and forty-seven seconds.
We didn't even threaten the record today.
I know. It's good.
When you look for comprehensive plan, it, it shows up as a bunch of.